Then I will call to order continuation of the City Council's successor agency to the Palm Desert Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority Meeting for May 13th, 2021, having returned from closed session. And would the clerk please call for all?
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan.
Present.
Councilmember Nastandy. You're muted. I know you said yes. Councilmember Quintanilla.
Present.
Mayor Kelly.
Here.
All present.
And Councilmember Quintanilla has the privilege of leading the pledge.
And I do, if everyone will join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Harnick.
Thank you so much. We gather here today and view our work through the lens of public service, the greater public good, and the future of our community. And we're here to use our resources wisely and well to represent all members of our community fairly today and for generations to come, to make decisions with the insight, vision, and understanding that promote the common good for today and tomorrow. And may our personal beliefs give us strength to act honestly and wisely in all matters before us. Thank you.
Thank you. May it be so. Is there anything to report from closed session?
No, their direction was given, but no reportable actions were taken. Thank you.
We have a proclamation honoring National Public Works Week. And do we have any staff present to elevate for this momentous proclamation? Andy, are you representing Public Works?
If Randy Bowman is in the waiting room, I'd like to ask that we elevate Randy Bowman.
And here he comes. It is my great pleasure on behalf of us all to recite this proclamation for National Public Works Week. Our public works staff doesn't hear enough appreciation because when the roads are perfectly smooth, we don't think to call up. When we hit a pothole, we think to call up. And thanks to our wonderful staff, it's pretty rare to hit a pothole in the city of Palm Desert. Whereas public works professionals focus on the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Palm Desert. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and the private sector and who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children to gain an understanding of the importance of public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated National Public Works Week annually since 1960, now therefore I Kathleen Kelly, Mayor of the City of Palm Desert, along with the entire City Council, do hereby recognize the week of May 16 through 22 as National Public Works Week. So look for one of our public works trucks that we can always give them a smile and a thumbs up. Todd or Andy, do you have anything to add to extol the virtues of this critical department?
Not much more than you added, Mayor. Just thank our employees for making sure that the traffic intersections are always taken care of, that our capital projects are put in place, and the work that they do each day. I mean, part of how you know they're doing a great job is they're seen not heard, and we don't hear anything back. I mean, it's just amazing the level of service they provide us. So I thank you for doing the proclamation, recognizing those great employees of ours. So.
Terrific. There are three other important observances this month, which I would like to briefly note. And I'm intentional in being brief rather than using a proclamation in these instances because sometimes fewer words have greater power. This month is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I encourage all of us to take some intentional time to use our favorite search engine or consult others to learn more this month about the vast contributions to our society of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And in the face of incidents reported throughout the country, I hope we will all recommit ourselves to the principle of if you see something, say something, do something in any instances where any group is victimized because of their status. We celebrate all Asian American Pacific Islanders in our community. This month is also Mental Health Month. And it's appropriate to pause and take note that the pandemic has caused additional pressure and stress on many people's mental well-being. So I encourage you all to be mindful of those around us. Notice if someone doesn't seem to be themselves or is isolated. Anyone may call 211 in the County of Riverside to access mental health services. And we all have a part to play in making sure that mental health issues are not stigmatized. The week of May 9th through the 15th was first addressed by President John F. Kennedy in 1962 as National Police Week. President Kennedy explicitly named May 15th as National Police Memorial Day to recall those who have lost their lives protecting us. Right now, throughout our country, there's appropriate attention to police practices and police training. And I presume some of Palm Desert's finest among our police are on this zoo. They are people committed to the very best training and police practices. As councilmembers, we receive something called Critical Incident Reports that tell us how law enforcement is responding to needs throughout the city. Those Critical Incident Reports go to deeply affirm how important a well-trained police force is to a civilized society and how greatly we are blessed to have people who are willing to put themselves in arms' way for our sake. So we pause to say thank you to all of those who serve the full community in that respect. We have two very special presentations. The Southern California Association of Governments has given six, just six awards throughout all of Southern California for special accomplishment in sustainability. And Palm Desert is a part of two out of those six, one of which our city has received directly, and the second of which was awarded to Sunline Transit, of which we are a part through a joint powers agreement. And I wonder if Eric Sayhoff might be elevated at this point to introduce some information about these truly special awards.
Yep. Hi, good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, we're extremely proud to announce that the city has received a sustainability award related to active, healthy, and safe communities from the Southern California Association of Governments, also referred to as SCAG, which represents six counties in Southern California from Imperial up to Ventura. That's also representing over 190 cities. And in that area, the city has received an award for its San Pablo Phase One project. What's exciting about that is you can feel the improvements that are on the street that are in place today. We planted over 300 trees out on the street. We removed a vehicle lane in each direction, which helps us better manage traffic, make it safer for pedestrians and non-motorized users. And we've also incorporated seven new themed pocket parks on the street, which have benefited those neighborhoods in that immediate area. In addition to that, the Sunline Transit Agency, just to the north of the city of Palm Desert, also received an award related to clean cities and alternative fuels for their research and use of hydrogen fuels. So the Coachella Valley and the entire SCAG region receiving two awards is great to be recognized in such a huge region. So I believe we have a video to show you as well.
Sunline Transit Agency recognizes the importance of low-to-zero emission technology for overall air quality and quality of life for residents. By 1994, Sunline was the first in the nation to provide transit services to the community using a 100% clean fuels fleet. Sunline also became the first in the world to incorporate hybrid electric technology and the first small agency to complete and file its innovative clean transit plan with the California Air Resources Board. Sunline's zero emission buses are utilized on the entire transit network, providing benefits to all Coachella Valley communities. Sunline has forged partnerships in its energy projects that create a vision for the future of clean fuels, including how the technology will be integrated into transit agency operations throughout the country. The West Coast Center of Excellence in Zero Emission Technology and Renewable Energy provides a comprehensive workforce training program in transportation technologies. The center focuses its program on deploying and operating zero emission buses in public fleets. Sunline's PEM Hydrogen Electrolizer, which became operational last year, is the largest hydrogen fueling station dedicated to transit in the U.S. It uses electricity and renewable energy to generate clean hydrogen. The station includes hydrogen production, compression, storage, and dispensing. The electrolyzer is capable of producing 900 kilograms of hydrogen daily, which is enough to support a fleet of 32 fuel cell electric buses. Just one fuel cell bus can save hundreds of tons of greenhouse gases each year, equivalent to taking 29 cars off the road or 600 trees. Aside from generating its own power through the PEM Hydrogen Electrolizer, Sunline is implementing a multi-year solar project to create renewable energy. Sunline is harnessing the power of the sun, which will provide self-sustaining onsite storage to power its fleet. Future phases will power the electrolyzer with solar, bring a public fueling station online, and incorporate a hydrogen electricity travel plaza on Interstate 10.
East La De Los Angeles is an afford of the city of Palm Desert. The corridor is a vital connection that links the shopping districts of El Paso and Highway 111 and mixed residential neighborhoods to the city's community gardens, Civic Center campus, and the College of the Desert. The project consists of rebalancing the previous five-lane roadway configuration to better serve pedestrians and non-motorized users. Completed in summer of 2020, Phase One of San Pablo Avenue was completely reconfigured to remove a vehicle travel lane in each direction. This allowed many improvements, including a roundabout and an expansion of pedestrian sidewalks. An enhanced streetscape in the commercial core includes themed seat walls, landscaping, public art installations, artist-designed crosswalks, new lighting, reconfigured on-street vehicle parking, seven new themed community pocket parks, and over 300 street trees throughout the street corridor. In partnership with SCAG, the city participated in the Go Human Campaign to host a 10-day demonstration of the proposed San Pablo improvements to the community. This demonstration ended with a one-day community event, Vision San Pablo, in which over 2,000 people attended to experience the street and complete surveys about the proposed improvements. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive and provided the City Council confidence to move forward with permanent improvements. The completion of the project is the result of a collaborative, multi-year, multi-agency, and multifaceted process that continues today with an anticipated completion date of June 2021. Phase Two of the project will provide a cycle track that connects directly into the CV Link project. This connection allows easy access and transition to and from CV Link and into San Pablo and the city's downtown core.
Thank you. You know, we are quite proud of our partners with Sunline Transit Agency and the city of Palm Desert in completing Phase One of San Pablo. And since we just made a proclamation for Public Works Week, it must be recognized the public work staff at City Hall and the efforts they put into getting both Phase One and Phase Two under construction.
Thank you for that, Eric, and congratulations to the whole staff because I doubt there's anyone who didn't have some piece of this very, very large project from financial planning to marketing and events. So congratulations to the whole staff and congratulations to my colleagues for foresight to envision this. And frankly, congratulations to our whole community because this really flowed from a process that started back in 2013 called Envision Palm Desert, which had participation from over 160 residents weighing in to dream what might be possible. And it's pretty exciting to see some of that actually happening. So congratulations. Now, speaking of resident input, we do pay attention to it. And this is the time on the agenda for anyone to speak up about items which are not for us tonight, any non-agenda items. So if you came to speak about one of the topics we're taking up, you'll need to wait until that explicit topic to make sure we hear everything concerning each topic at one time. But if you've come to raise a different issue to us, this would be the time to do that. And you can raise your hand, clicking the raised hand on the Zoom system. I see one person has done so so far. I'll keep talking while others have a chance to do that. In just a moment, the clerk will provide some additional instructions. But the key things I need to feature are you have three minutes, and Ms. Ruiz Serrano will be our timekeeper. It's always possible to make an appointment with us without a three-minute limit. And we encourage you to do that or to reach out by email. The Brown Act forecloses us from engaging in conversation with you tonight, but we all are gregarious and love to engage with residents. So please do reach out to us by contacting City Hall. Ms. Suntres, did you have some additional instructions?
Yes. Thank you for participating in our remote virtual City Council meeting. We will do our best to facilitate a smooth meeting with public participation. The agenda provided options and instructions for providing public comment at these meetings. Before we begin, please silence your other communication devices, such as your cell or desk phone. This will ensure that we are not hearing any feedback or causing interruption during the meeting. The mayor will invite public comment where appropriate on the agenda. For those on Zoom, if you would like to make a public comment on the Zoom screen, please click on the raise hand button, which is found by hitting the participants tab. If you are using Zoom on your smartphone, tap your screen, look for the more option, and then click on the raised hand button on the screen. For those calling in using the phone line, you can dial *9 on your keypad to signal that you would like to comment. When called upon, you will be allowed to speak. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and please state your first and last name. Thank you.
I see a warning and praise from a telephone number. And it looks like
Good afternoon. This is Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you for allowing me to Zoom. So anyway, I wanted to, I just heard some of your earlier presentation concerning San Pablo and the work restricting your roads, road diet, I guess they call it. And I didn't know it was part of SCAG, and, well, not part of SCAG, but you were, well, working with SCAG. And if anybody knows anything about SCAG, it makes perfect sense. So, and hopefully the city is as lost. So anyway, I want to talk about the mosquito and vector control district out of Indio, California, which you have a trustee that's been pointed to that, well, you have a member of the public that you appointed as a trustee to that vector control organization's directors or board members. And his name is Mr. Walker, and he's been on that board since 2007. And, you know, I think you just renewed his contract or position or appointment. And, but I would hope that maybe somebody in your city, anybody else, could really step in and fill his shoes because I think that, I went to the district meeting this last week, and I didn't go there, but I attended. And they're not going to raise the assessment, property assessment this year, but they can certainly reduce it, and they chose not to do it. One person decided this in a committee meeting, just because they think they may raise it next year. And they can raise it anytime they want, but that's millions of dollars that they're taking out of people's pockets just to have in reserves. And that goes with the sterilize, they want to have a sterilized program, sterilized mayoral, A.D.'s Aegypti mosquito program, which they're going to work on. And this is a statewide mission of the Vector Control Association. And so I would strongly recommend that people get involved in this if you don't want modified mosquitoes flying around. And I'm going to wait for item 26 on drive-throughs because I think I have something to say. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Ruiz Serrano, is there anyone else waiting to speak?
There's supposed to be another gentleman, but I don't see him here yet. Other than that, I don't see anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Which brings us to the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove an item? Yes, Councilmember Jonathan.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have three, but I promise that I will be brief. Those would be seven, eight, and 17.
Seven, eight, and 17. And Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
I would just like to register an abstention on 4A.
Did you get that, Madam Clark?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, seven, eight, and 17. Did I get that correct? Is there a motion for the remainder?
A motion to approve the remainder.
Thank you. Please take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
I.
Councilmember Nastandy?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
I.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 with the exception of seven, eight, and 17, and an abstention by Mayor Pro Tim Harnick on 4A.
Thank you. We'll take up item seven, which is a request for approval of AZ Poms by John Cuevas as the public art component of the La Quinta Brewing Company, Tina Stokes' applicant. And Councilmember Jonathan, did you have a specific comment or question?
Two quick questions, and I see Ms. Quillman has joined us and can probably provide the answers. And we do have a full agenda, so just a brief response if possible. I'm curious, and I'm sorry if I missed it, why did two of the committee members vote no? What was their concern?
Yes, one of the concern was that the artwork might look a little too commercial. And the other one, I believe there was a concern for future projects that this artist is, actually the artist who did the logo right behind me. So he's been very prolific in Palm Desert lately, and it was just a concern that eventually there isn't a saturation of one artist's work throughout the city.
Thank you. And I'm wondering, since it is an exterior mural, are there any provisions for, you know, maintenance or upkeep so that it doesn't literally fade away?
Yes, there is a requirement that all artwork be kept up on a regular basis. I've spoken with the applicant about that specifically, and that murals do require a bit more upkeep. And the artist is well aware of that. And the artist is well aware of that, as is the applicant, and it's very doable. Murals can last a long time if sealed properly and the base coat is proper, and the artist is very experienced in this area, so I'm very comfortable with this particular project in that area. The other thing is the Public Art Ordinance has a component to it that requires that the artworks stay in place, which would mean in good condition. Uh, otherwise, the certificate of occupancy could be pulled, but I'd never want to get to that point. We, we could, we can work with our, with our-
Exactly. And that was my concern, since this is being allowed in lieu of the fee, we want to make sure that the applicant is the one that's responsible and that we have teeth to enforce that, and you've indicated to do. Okay. I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, did you want me to go to the other items, or do, do we want to vote on these separately?
Yes, let's take them as they come. So if you're prepared to move approval, please do.
Sure, move approval.
Second.
Let's take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nistandi?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item eight is request for approval of sponsorship request for a virtual Palm Desert food and wine festival. And I am, uh, Mr. Sol is with us. Uh, Councilmember Jonathan, did you have a specific question or comment?
I did. Thank you. Questions, uh, too. So, Mr. Sol, and again, I'm sorry if I missed it. I didn't see a proposed date. This is to approve a, a, a one-year $30,000 sponsorship for a virtual food and wine event, and I, I didn't see a, a proposed date. Do we have one?
Uh, that's correct. This is actually a, a series of ongoing virtual events that will be happening spread out over a number of months. And so there wasn't one specific date for this, but it will be multiple events.
When will it start?
Um, it will, that's a good question. I don't know exactly. We do have Michael Matthews and Paulina Larson available to answer that, if you'd like them to be elevated. Oh, here's Michael.
All right. Paulina, Michael, did you, did you, here's a question.
Yes, hi, hello.
Hi.
Thank you for having us. Um, yes, so Palm Desert Food and Wine Festival, the virtual experience is scheduled to kick off on June fifteenth with Chef Jamie Wen. So this will be the start off of a virtual event where we hope to capture thousands of people to have culinary experiences with our celebrity chefs. We had a very extensive lineup planned for 2020, and we weren't able-
I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I don't, didn't ask for an overview of the event. We have that in our packet. I just wanted to know when it starts, and I think you answered that, and thank you for that. So June fifteenth, and it goes on for a few months, is my understanding.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sol, um, I think we've seen a proposal to, um, recontinue our normal sponsorship, which is several hundred thousand dollars for the event that would take place in March. Um, if that's correct, then the proposed $30,000 is in addition to the city's previous commitment.
That's correct. Um, this year, we didn't, because the event didn't happen, we did not, um, pay a sponsorship. But I didn't want, but I, so I'm bringing this to you separately because it wasn't, uh, it wasn't the original event that had been proposed to you that had been approved, approved, sorry, as part of that uh, five-year agreement. So because it was a separate sort of thing, I wanted to bring it to you as a separate uh, item so that you would know exactly what you were approving and why it's at a different level than that hundred thousand dollars that had been approved.
So this is separate in addition to what would take place, hopefully, in, uh, spring of twenty-two.
We're still hoping for spring of twenty-two, yes.
Okay, and there would not be an overlap on the dates. It was my concern.
I believe that's correct. Paulina, can you confirm that?
Correct.
Okay.
And Mayor Pro Tim Harnick has a question or comment?
I, I just have a comment because when I was reading over it, it seemed like such a fun way to go. And Savvy, I saw you cooking along with those chefs. I could just see it. And it's so great. It's so great that we're using local chefs and we're using Jensen's, which is a local and unique store. So I, I really appreciate it the way they have integrated our community into this event.
That sounded like a motion.
And this sounds like a second.
Perfect.
We have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation. Would you please take the vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nistandi?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And, thank you. Item seventeen is a request for declaration of surplus property and authorization of disposal of electronics, office furniture, and miscellaneous equipment. Did you want to add or subtract Councilmember Jonathan?
Uh, this one is actually just a brief comment. I know that in the staff report, it was noted that the equipment would either be donated or disposed of, and it appeared that on the list that was provided that many of the items are simply obsolete. And, you know, one person's trash is another person's treasure, and there are multiple programs that take obsolete equipment, even broken equipment, and, uh, make them workable and, uh, provide them to communities of need. So I want to encourage staff, uh, to donate where possible rather than, uh, just dispose of them. Thank you.
Can I second that motion?
Yes, the motion has been moved and seconded, and Clay nodded, which tells me he heard that input. Uh, so would you please take the vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nistandi?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Uh, which completes the consent calendar and brings us to item eight D. Request for approval of cooperative agreement with the Riverside County Fire Department to provide fire protection, fire prevention, rescue, and medical emergency services for the city of Palm Desert. And, uh, is, there is staff report.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. The city's agreement with Riverside County for fire protection and emergency medical services expires this year on June thirtieth. Due to the timing issues tonight, we are only reviewing the cooperative agreement and not the budget, which the city council will undertake a comprehensive review of on May twenty-sixth. The term of this agreement is three years through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I want to note that the city cannot unilaterally terminate the agreement. State law requires that termination by either party must be approved by voters under a special election. Should the city's current agreement expire, state law introduced in two thousand fifteen also potentially requires county local agency formation commission approval to enter back into a contractual arrangement and subjects the city to potential challenges resulting in a loss of local control. Please keep in mind, changes can still be made to the agreement during the term um, with a hundred and twenty days written notice and mutual agreement of both parties. Lastly, I want to note that the Public Safety Commission reviewed this matter. They had no additional feedback for the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Uh, Councilmember Jonathan?
Yes, um, Mr. Ariane, I'm, I'm wondering, on the term of the contract, would, does it create any problems or issues having a series of one-year contracts that are renewable, three times, for example, or two times for a total of three years?
Um, you know, I, I would defer to Chief White regarding their operations and how that affects the city. Could all, obviously, go through that, but I don't know what type of administrative burden that puts on the county.
Chief White, did you have any comments about that?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor, staff, and council members. We could definitely take that back, uh, to headquarters if that's something that the city is wishing to, uh, to look into entering as just a one-year agreement. Uh, the current option that was provided was just the three, but if that's, uh, if that's the direction that you would like to head, we can, uh, we can definitely follow up with that.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Thank you. I have a, just a, I, I'm sorry, I didn't ask this before, but I was wondering why, uh, engine thirty-three, truck thirty-three was pulled out and profiled separately in all these exhibits.
That is a, a separate cost that's shared with the Cove Commission, so it's, it's treated liberally for, for those reasons.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, it's time for discussion.
Well, I, I have a question. It's directly toward Councilmember Jonathan. What benefit do you see having one year versus three years?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you. Um, so I think it was a bit of a surprise to a, a lot of people that this new, relatively new state law that requires a, a vote of, uh, you know, the, the voters, um, to terminate a contract. Uh, it's the only case that I'm aware of. It's the only situation where, and, you know, a government entity is required to actually get a vote to cancel a contract. And I don't foresee that we will need to cancel a contract, but you never know. Um, so my reason in asking is that it just gives us the flexibility um, of cancelling without going through the, the length and the expense of a special election to cancel a, a contract should it be needed. So instead, we would have a series of one-year contracts, maybe something like a one-year contract with two options to renew, so that it's still a three-year term essentially, but we get an out every year, if you will. That, that's where I was heading.
Thank you.
And my own concern up, up that path. I did attend a session at one of the many conferences uh, that were part of, uh, about just how intrusive Laughco can be in local decision-making of, of these services if we were to allow a contract to lapse. So I have some nervousness, quite frankly, about putting ourselves in a position where we have to get that right uh, three years in succession with potential real adverse consequences, uh, if a contract lapses. So those, that's the counterfeiting consideration. So, yes, Councilmember Quintanilla.
I echo your sentiment, Mayor, and my question would be, if we should have any concerns, what would our, our alternative be? Should we end up having a lapse? Are we prepared, not just for the additional cost, but what could happen in terms of public safety? And so, you know, that's, that's the real concern of what are the implications beyond potentially just waiting?
So what's the will of the council when someone like to offer a motion?
I would move approval of staff recommendation.
A second.
Let's take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nistandi?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item nineteen is Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash twelve, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Desert rescinding and placing Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash oh eight, adopting authorized classifications, allocated positions, salary schedule, and salary ranges included herein and attached as exhibit A, effective with pay periods ending after it says May first, twenty twenty-one, but I thought I saw April someplace. So, uh, let's have the staff report. You can clarify my confusion.
Yeah, good afternoon. What you see before you is a resolution to adopt an updated resolution of allocated positions to reflect the recent restructuring that the city underwent. What you saw in the staff report was just to note that in April, the city adopted this resolution to update the salary tables to reflect the cost of living adjustment that the council had approved. And at the same time, the city was undergoing a restructuring, and so that needs to be reflected in the allocated positions. So in April, you updated the exhibits, and now you're updating the actual allocated positions.
Okay, if I may jump in with a question here, just to clarify. I did see April, the top of the salary schedule says effective April twenty twenty-one. So is that the intention?
Yes, it is. The salary tables were updated to reflect the cost of living adjustment in April. What you are adopting today is that listing, the first part of exhibit A of the resolution, which is the listing of allocated positions, and that lists the classifications and the number of each one in the city and what appropriate salary grade on the salary table they would be associated with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Is there a, a Councilmember Quintanilla?
Not quite a, a question, but just a statement of support, and I wanted to, to give my gratitude to our city manager that a lot of staff have mentioned that they feel heard and that what an incredible endeavor this must have been. So appreciation to all of the staff that was involved in reshaping, uh, Team Palm Desert to a whole new level of efficiency. So deepest gratitude.
Which I take to be a motion to approve.
I motion to approve.
A second.
Take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nistandi?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item twenty is request for approval to initiate proceedings to levy and collect annual assessments within and grant preliminary approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Engineers Report for Consolidated Palm Desert Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number One. May we have the staff report?
Reunited, Madam Mayor, uh, city council members, I apologize, there's, uh, technical difficulty, but, um, this request is for approval to initiate proceedings to levy and collect annual assessments within the grant preliminary approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Engineers Report uh, for consolidated, uh, Palm Desert landscaping and lighting districts, number one. We would be happy to answer any questions on, uh, with us is Will Dan, our consultant, and, uh, also Mr. Thomas Smiths, I believe, uh, is, is here as well.
Are there any questions from council? Is there a motion? Councilmember Quintanilla?
I had to ask the, the staff a question in terms of, uh, what were the adjustments and where they came from. I just want to be considerate of the public that is watching and maybe not understanding when people are voting on, on rate hikes and dealing with districts. So I wanted to know, given all of the flexibility, given that some could go from three percent to six percent, is this truly the most efficient way? I would just hate to- I would just hate to try to take anything away from families that have been struggling so much. So is this the absolute minimum amount that can be increased?
Yes, hi, my name is Josephine Moses, I'm with Will Dan Financial Services. So the there are thirty-three zones within the landscape and lighting districts. These have set rates that have been approved from the time of formation. They do have an annual escalator of the less of CPI or 3%. And for this year, the increase is a 2.25% increase. And in some areas, we do have, we are having to levy at max based on the budget. In most cases, however, they're all under less than 3%. And we do factor year to year, given the circumstances and the budget, to ensure that we have a level of applied rates going forward to for this year. So we do factor in budget, we do factor in to make sure that year to year that you don't see a fluctuation from the property owners.
Thank you very much, Ms. Josephine, greatly appreciated, thank you.
Any other questions or motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nastandy?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla? Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And everyone stay right where you are for the next two items. Item twenty-one.
Good afternoon.
I do need to read a little more, they just love to hear my voice. Item twenty-one is request for approval to initiate proceedings to levy the annual assessment for City of Palm Desert Benefit Assessment District Number One for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Thank you, Mr. Matts.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Kelly and members of the City Council, I apologize for missing the prior item, I was disconnected. This is just the routine initiation of proceedings as the mayor indicated to approve the to levy the annual assessment for the Benefit Assessment District Number One.
Any new questions? May we please have a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Please take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nastandy?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla? Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And item twenty-two is request for approval to initiate proceedings to renew the President's Plaza Property Three Property and Business Improvement District and to levy and collect assessments therein. Mr. Matts?
This is the last year of the current five-year term. The Public Works Department distributed a petition and gathered the signatures, and over 50% of the assessed parcels voted to renew the district.
Very good, thank you. Any, yes, Councilmember Jonathan?
Thank you, Mayor, question, so you know, we ran into what turned out to be a very, very significant financial issue with regards to President's Plaza, largely as a result of lack of funding for proper maintenance. Have we learned from that lesson? Is this budget adequate to prevent that kind of significant deterioration that's going to cause us to spend another $8 million on another parking lot? And maybe, Randy, you want to address that because, you know, it's the question is, is there enough in the budget to take proper care of this parking lot?
In the short term, yes, there is. We did speak with several of the property owners out there, they did they did address their concerns. But for this current period of time, there aren't enough monies for larger CIP-type projects. But we did speak about for future to come up with creative ways to ensure that there are funds for those type of repairs. We don't foresee any major repairs happening during this term. However, this is going to require some extensive dialogue and some some creative ideas to come up with ways to increase increase the levies for the next term.
Well, the challenge, I guess, is getting them to say yes, but there are alternatives. So we don't have to have a business improvement district, this is private property. And, you know, it's not perhaps for tonight, but I want to plant a seed, no pun intended, Mr. Chavez, that these districts are similar to HOAs, and they have an operating expense component, and they have a long-term replacement component. And, you know, homeowners pay the total of those two. Why should not business owners do the same? Had we done that with President's Plaza, we wouldn't be at the point that we are now. I don't know if it's too late to do that here, I'm just suggesting in terms of ideas, that might be something that staff wants to take a look at if they haven't already.
We have spoken about it, we do, we are learning from our lessons from previous mistakes, so to speak. We are putting together a group of staff members from different divisions, departments, and being more proactive, specifically with the President's Plazas, to come up with creative ways, be a little bit more proactive, so we could deal with these issues, so we don't encounter these issues. But and that's something that the Finance Department and Public Works, where, like I mentioned, we are putting together a team to do this sooner rather than later. It seems like we were always behind the eight ball, unfortunately, but we have learned our lessons and we are acting according, adjusting accordingly.
Well, and thank you, and just to be clear, this goes back many, many years. So I'm not pointing fingers, and if there were fingers pointed, they certainly wouldn't be at any existing staff because you were not there at that time. So I appreciate that, I have full faith and confidence in the professionalism and expertise and abilities of our staff. So I think the issue is in good hands, I just wanted to bring up the concern and maybe some possible solutions just to be considered. Thank you for the opportunity to do that.
Any other questions, comments, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nastandy?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, and thank you all, and the title for the next one is long, so hopefully Ms. Tapia can be on her way to join us as I read item twenty-three. Resolution Numbers 2021-20 and 2021-21, Approving a Deposit and Reimbursement Agreement and the Engagement of Certain Financing Professionals for a Tender Bonds Alternative in the Refunding Program for the Outstanding Series 2006 A City of Palm Desert Community Facilities District Number 2005-1 University Park CFD and B Acting as the Legislative Body of University Park CFD Approving a Tender Bonds Alternative Component of the Refunding Program and a Notice and Participation Form, as well as taking certain other actions in connection there with Ms. Tapia, would you please give us the staff report?
That mute button. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Veronica Tapia, your senior management analyst for the Finance Department. The University Park Investor LLC, or UPI as we know them, has requested that the city assist with the refunding the bonds associated with the University Park CFD. As part of the refunding, UPI has requested that a new money component be added to complete the public improvements associated with the project that are incomplete at this time, as well as refund the original debt that were issued with the 2005 bonds. There are several steps required with this under the Melrose Law, CFD law basically, that must be taken in order to achieve these goals. While UPI owns the vast share of the property within the CFD, there are other smaller-sized property owners within the CFD boundaries. One of those owners is Lennar Homes. Lennar would like the option to pay off their portion of the 2005 CFD bonds. In order to accomplish this, a tender bond alternative must be added, as well as a deposit agreement with Lennar Homes must be approved by City Council. Approval of the resolutions tonight will provide this option for Lennar as part of the refunding. That concludes my presentation on this item. Staff, legal, and representatives from Lennar Homes are available if you have any specific questions.
Thank you, that was much more clear than the title. So, much appreciated. Any questions before we take up this item? Yes, Councilmember Quintanilla?
Thank you, Ms. Tapia, you mentioned that Lennar was objecting to that, and I was wondering out of the other small parcel owners, if any of them, or excuse me, not objecting, but was raising a point, I was wondering out of the other small parcel owners, have they been reached out? Have they not responded, or are they favorable, or what is their consensus? I just feel that being such a broad base that's taking up all of the attention, just to be sure no one is left out, thank you.
So all of the property owners are notified about this opportunity once it's approved. Lennar has been a party to many of the meetings up until this point, and they requested this opportunity. Each of the property owners have the ability to request it as well by June 4th, I believe, is their deadline, and so they'll also have that opportunity. This is only required of undeveloped parcels that we have the tender bond alternative. Anyone that has a developed parcel within the district may pay off at any time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nastandy?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla? Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item twenty-four, Resolution Numbers 2021-22 and 2021-23, A Resolution Calling a Special Election Within City of Palm Desert Community Facilities District Number 2021-1 University Park. And secondly, a resolution declaring the results of a special election in City of Palm Desert Community Facilities District Number 2021-1 University Park and directing the recording of notice of special tax lien and C Conduct the First Reading of Ordinance Number 1365, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Desert Acting in Its Capacity as Legislative Body of City of Palm Desert Community Facilities District Number 2021-1 University Park, Authorizing the Levy of the Special Tax Within that District. And Ms. Tapia, the staff report?
Yes, ma'am, I will do my best to keep this one brief as well. The Community Facilities District Law, or CFD law, requires that a ballot election of the property owners within the land, within the boundaries of a CFD be held in order to approve a special tax lien. As noted in the last item, this is the new money component of the University Park CFD refunding plan, and the only property owner is University Park Investor. If the result of the ballot election is that UPI has voted in the affirmative to place a lien on the property, then the council can make a finding and declare the result of the election by approving the resolution directing lien recordation. The council may then conduct the first reading of the ordinance number 1365, authorizing the levy of the special tax. This special election is not a general election of the voters within the city, but an election by the property owners within the CFD boundaries pursuant to CFD law. This item keeps the refunding process moving forward. The debt associated with the refunding plan will be the responsibility of the property owners and collected as part of their property tax semiannually. The next steps for the refunding will include adopting a resolution relative to public improvements on behalf of CPWD, and finally, approving the financing documents in June. That concludes my presentation on this item. Mayor Kelly, staff, legal, and UPI reps are available to answer any questions for you at the appropriate time.
Excellent, and because there is several steps we need to pursue in order at this time, the clerk has kindly provided me with a short leash in the form of a script. And the first item on that script indicates that we need to adopt Resolution Number 2021-22. Would someone like to move that resolution?
So moved.
And now seconded.
May we please have the vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nastandy?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Which, if I'm correct, now leads to the opening of the election pursuant to Resolution Number 2021-22, Resolution Calling Special Election, The Community Facilities District Special Election for Incurring Pounded Entendedness, The Levy of the Special Tax and Establishment of the Appropriations Limit for City of Palm Desert Community Facilities District Number 2021-1 University Park is now open, and the city clerk may conduct the election.
I have received one ballot.
Madam Clerk, I gather in that you have received the ballot from the sole qualified landowner elector in the district.
I have received the ballot and finding that all ballots in the election have been submitted to declare the election closed.
Could the city clerk as the elections official and canvassing board proceed to canvas the ballot?
Will do. I have verified the information on the identification envelope for return of mail ballot. I will open the ballot and count the votes. And will execute the certificate of the city clerk for the results of the canvas of the election returns. As the elections official and canvassing board for the City of Palm Desert Community Facilities District 2021-1 University Park, special election held on May 13, 2021, I have completed my canvas of the ballot. The canvas was as follows. On Proposition A, 166 votes were cast in support of the proposition, and zero votes were cast in opposition of the proposition. Therefore, Proposition A was approved with 100% vote in favor. On Proposition B, 166 votes were cast in support of the proposition, and zero votes were cast in opposition to the proposition. Therefore, Proposition B was approved with 100% vote in favor.
Thank you. With that, it becomes appropriate to consider the resolution declaring the results of the election, which is the results of the election, which is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. Would someone like to move that resolution?
So moved.
And.
I'll second it if nobody else has.
Yes. Thank you, and please take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nastandy?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero, for resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty-three.
Uh, which now makes it appropriate to introduce for first reading the ordinance lifting the special tax, which is ordinance number one three six five. Uh, and would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nastandy?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Most, motion carries, five zero, ordinance thirteen sixty-five, pass the second reading.
And Ms. Tapia, does that complete our work on this item?
For today, it does, yes. Thank you.
Well, I should have, I should have said for today. It's very good. Thank you so much, and thank you for the script.
You're welcome.
Which brings us to item twenty-five, which is a request for direction to staff on Lupine Lane. And Mr. Schwartz.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Kevin Schwartz, Associate Planner, Planning Department. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay. So just a brief background, on September tenth, two thousand and twenty, the city council directed staff to move forward with creating an outdoor dining area along Lupine Lane. Uh, on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, Lupine Plaza was created. Uh, the cost to rent the equipment for the eight months from October to June first, two thousand and twenty-one, was sixty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. A council gave staff a budget of seventy thousand dollars, which, which was for maintenance and cleanup. Uh, currently, these are photos. Uh, this is taken from, obviously, El Paso. This is what it looked like. We brought in some temporary landscaping, some water barriers. We tried to screen them with some banners. Uh, had AstroTurf, umbrellas, cabanas, uh, string lights, and obviously tables and chairs. So staff found that this was a huge success and a benefit to the merchants and the community. We, we did hear a lot of positive things, especially from the restaurants. Uh, staff found that it was heavily used from October to February. Uh, it was still used in the, in the months of March and even April, but indoor dining was, was allowed again. And then a lot of the restaurants in El Paso have their dining decks into place. Uh, owners of the El Paso Square, the Goodmans, have, have been supportive of this. They manage the center where Cody Gallery is, all of the fast casual dining areas. And they've actually suggested a permanent space. They've, they've met with staff and council members over the years. And during this process, we did work with adjacent businesses. So here's Lupine Lane, and then here's El Paso. So obviously, when we first did this, we put the barriers here. We did hear some negative comments. This is existing two-story office building here, because they have a driveway, their main driveway is here. We did block this off. Uh, they did have access, which is back here, which is through the alley, which is coming here. But this, a couple of the businesses there did meet with staff, and I believe a council member or two, about the, the driveway. There, there were some accountants in there, and so during tax season. So what staff did is during February, we relocated the water barriers and to about here, and we opened up this driveway, which those business owners were, were very happy about. Uh, the other potential issue that, that we had at first was with Cody Gallery. Cody currently has a loading lane, which is located right here. They have a back door here. They park a van in that area, and that's how they deliver their art pieces to their customers. And so with the barriers, they, they, you know, their new loading area was back here. Staff, we did allow them to have a sign there. So when we did move the water barricades up, they were happy because it was a shorter walk for them. But since then, Code has been a very huge supporter of it. You know, if you, if you've been out there within the recent weeks, you have seen the mural that they put out there. Uh, as part of the, the El Paso Merchants Association, staff met with them in April. Uh, they were very supportive of Lupine Plaza and very complimentary of council members for creating that space. Uh, in moving forward, they, they do recommend that the council uh, support staff's recommendation of hiring professional services for design concepts to transform it into what many of them refer to it as kind of a living room space with seats, misters, art sculptures and landscaping, and maybe even a water teacher. They did recommend not to remove Lupine Plaza. Again, the contract ends with Bright on June first, two thousand and twenty-one. They, I guess the reasoning behind it is that they're afraid that if we remove the furnishings, that we won't get it back. So concepts, you know, moving forward, transforming the space into a permanent outdoor area, staff believes would be a huge benefit to the community and the merchants. Uh, some design concepts that staff is, is tossing around is raising the street, making it flush with the curb. You can do this with different treatments such as bricks, pavers, colored concrete or decorative art. Shade trees would definitely be needed, some string lights, misters, art sculptures. Uh, program the event for private and public, you know, an event like swing and hops could definitely occur in this area. And what we heard going back to the Gibbs study is that El Paso does not have a lot of public restrooms. So if you do create this space, you know, we, we, we have been brought up to maybe look at restrooms. So these are just examples. I'm not saying these are nice examples, but these are just examples of, of other cities that have turned in kind of side streets similar to this into event spaces. This is in Nashville. They're very known for their food trucks, and so they basically created this kind of outdoor area for events. This is taken from the Gibbs study, uh, you know, from, from El Paso. I believe that this kind of mimicked what, what could happen there. We line it with shade trees on either side. You have string lights going across, some, some water features, or maybe a sculpture. And then some decorative concrete. Uh, this, I necessarily don't really like this, but it's to show that other cities have used art in the past. Uh, again, this is Northern California, where they kind of created just, just an outdoor amenity area. Uh, this is in LA Sunset Triangle, just looking at the treatment that they used on the street. And then again, in Denver, Colorado, just creating this kind of a little open plaza area. I, and lastly, this is in San Francisco, Annie Street, they use this area for, for kind of musicians, open, open mic night. And then what, what I liked about this is kind of the signage that they had. So recommendation one is, uh, if council wants to go down this road, is to direct staff to seek professional services for design concepts. I will say that this process is, is pretty lengthy. Just to, to kind of lay it out, we do have to set up for a request for proposal that generally takes sixty days. Select a consultant, the type of services we'd be looking for is an architect, engineer, landscape services. And then from there, we would work on the design. That design, I just estimate, could, could take about three to six months to work on that. Again, we would work with the utility companies, which is key. Uh, the El Paso Merchants Association, the adjacent business owners and businesses. And if we wanted to, uh, create a subcommittee, we could, or, you know, there is the economic subcommittee. After the design and costs, then that has to come for council's approval. And then from there, if we do get approval, then you would have to do bid construction services. Uh, and then you would award the contract, and that whole process generally takes about three to four months. You could put plan check into this big construction area, but as you can see, going through this whole process, you're looking at about a year or so until potentially construction could occur. Uh, decision number two is direction on whether or not to remove the furnishings. Again, the, uh, the contract ends June first, two thousand and twenty-one, and Bright is, is already has it booked. If we did want to extend the contract, uh, Bright has quoted us the exact same price, so that's sixty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy. And then overall, you know, if you wanted to, uh, we recommend seventy thousand for maintenance. Uh, per the El Paso Merchants Association, they did recommend leaving the furnishings. If that was a recommendation, I would recommend maybe removing the stuff now. I don't anticipate people being in there from June, July or August, or September. It could have some wear and tear on the furniture. We could always leave the water barriers, and the city now owns that AstroTurf. As part of renting it, it was actually cheaper just to, uh, kind of purchase it in, in that agreement. So if you wanted to leave it, you could leave the water barriers and, and the turf. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Nastanta, and then Mayor Pro Tim Harnick.
Yeah, um, Kevin, thank you for the wonderful presentation and the, the photos of other, uh, cities that have made a nice outdoor area. Um, my question though relates to of the, of the El Paso Merchant Group. How many restaurant owners, uh, did you get feedback from in terms of keeping Lupine? Uh, or removing it? And then my second question, which I just heard at the very end, would it be sixty thousand to keep it during the summer? And it really wouldn't be used, or would that sixty thousand, if we decide to move forward, be applied to when cooler weather returns? Those are my two questions.
Yeah, so to answer the second one first, that sixty-three thousand is for a year. So if we, if we started it in June, then obviously to go June to June. That's why I was recommending, if you want to leave it out there, we should, uh, take away the furnishings and then, and then refurnish it in October, when it, when it'd actually be used. Uh, y- your first question, the El Paso Merchants, there isn't any restaurants owners on that as part of the individuals that vote. There is a property owner, uh, that represents various restaurants, The Daily Grill, uh, Sweet Basil, Kitchen Eighty-Six, and a few others. Uh, he was in support. We have gotten support from Fresh Agave, support of Pieros. Pizza Vino was in support. But as part of this, if council does grant staff to seek professional services, we would definitely do a lot more outreach with, with businesses.
Um, I have one more question. Have we reached out to, to Mr. Gibbs and the Gibbs study to see if this somehow coordinates with the plans we've already paid for? To get maybe, you know, get him involved in a way, because we did pay him all this money to do basically something similar to Lupine, what we paid him to do for the Main Street of El Paso.
Uh, I have not reached out to Mr. Gibbs, no.
It would probably, it would probably cost us something. So. Mayor Pro Tim Harnick?
I have a couple of questions, and, and sitting on, on the, uh, merchants board, there's a lot of support for it, and I, I think part of what's so important is, it's kind of teaching us as community members that it's here. It's reminding us that it's here. So to take it down would take us back a couple of steps. But I, I appreciate your thoughts of taking some of the furniture out, that it would be very, that the sun would really take a toll on. I have a question. Is this a type of project? Because to me, I would, I'll cut to the chase. Let me say, I support it. I think it's a wonderful uh, asset to El Paso and to the community, and it, it's kind of mirrors that San Pablo kind of feel. And I think that's really a great thing when we can bring community members together. And I would just want to put the process on fast forward. So, that's my question. Is this type of project that we could do a design build on? Or does this not the kind of project you can do that on?
I believe so. I would, I would like to defer to, uh, Public Works, so they have more experience with design build. So if somebody's with Public Works is on the call.
I mean, that could save us months.
Correct.
Or we could just, since we're just giving guidance, we're not uh, we're not engaging in any final approvals, the guidance could be to explore that.
It's an option to take a look at, please.
Uh, Councilmember Quintanilla?
I did not have a question, more so a comment, and wanted to give, uh, give gratitude. Thanks, Kevin, for being able to have a very, uh, complex description of how you specifically addressed the, the business owners that were directly impacted and how to take their concerns into something that benefits them. So I, I greatly applaud the effort and all of the collaboration to make that perfect Venn diagram where people are, are comfortable. So thank you for that, and thank you for you and your team.
Looks like we're sliding into discussion, and it also looks like I took the floor away from Mayor Pro Tim Harnick before you were done. Were you done for the moment?
I just forgot to take my hand down. Sorry.
Okey dokey. Councilmember Jonathan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I didn't realize we're sliding into comments. I did have a question, uh, for staff, Mr. Schwartz. The, the, the amount of funds we're talking about is unknown. I think your staff report indicated, even for the consulting, the consultant um, to do a design, and particularly for the ultimate improvements, rather broad range from a hundred K to five hundred K. Um, my question is, where would the funds come from? And, and I know we're not approving anything, but I'm just curious at this point, where would the funds come from for the consulting services? And where would they come from for the ultimate improvements?
The funds for the design would certainly take out of the general fund. Uh, you know, I, I think the, I, I think why he can't give you a, um, a number on the actual range, it's going to depend on the complexity of the design and the complexity, you know, how far, how much time we're taking. So you're probably going to need, we, we would probably want to come in and, and, uh, be able to give the design team at least some idea, ask them to bring you two or three different storyboards, um, complexity of it, how much activity went out there, and that's going to drive your design cost. So it's going to be a two-step process for us to get you a real solid, uh, number.
Just to. Yeah, I want to get the second part of my question answered, which is where would the capital improvement funding come from?
I would need to sit down with, uh, with our finance director and to answer your question. And again, that would, that's going to depend on the extent of the improvements, but we will, we can certainly have an answer for you in the next meeting or so.
Sorry, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
And it's okay, I think, to slide from question to discussion and back on, on an item like this, which is presented to us, uh, for direction. Because as we confer, additional questions may arise. Uh, so, does anyone have a further question in mind before we offer further comments? Uh, seeing no hands, I'll just offer, uh, two comments. Uh, I wholeheartedly support this. It's another opportunity to explore in a small way uh, without tearing up bald asphalt on the street. Uh, what we can accomplish and what the demand is for gathering places on El Paso. So I wholeheartedly support it. My two comments are, number one, when we get to the place where we have some uh, designs for serious consideration, let's present them to the public at, in a trial form, uh, so we can get some reaction and not be as surprised as we were by the sidewalks that we thought looked great on paper. Uh, I think San Pablo was a big success in part because we did such a good job of modeling what was intended and getting public input. So let's try to do something similar with it. Secondly, I'm going to buck the prevalent opinion that it's been discussed. I don't think we should take away the furniture for the summer uh, for several reasons. The first is, it's going to confuse the heck out of people. If the furniture disappears and all they see is that, uh, green in or out or carpet, they'll think we're taking the thing down, but taking our sweet time in doing it. So if the point is to let people know that this is going to continue, I say leave up the furniture and give us some more umbrellas in light of the heat. Uh, because what I'm hearing from merchants and from restaurateurs is that their business in May is matching a typical April. Uh, because of the pandemic and the release of pent-up demand, uh, people are now frequenting our businesses and our restaurants uh, as they typically would in a. as they typically would in April. So June is probably going to be like May and July is going to be like June. And we'll have a much busier summer than is typical. If you're out and about in the summer, you sure as heck will appreciate a place to stop and take a load off and maybe enjoy a cold drink. So my two points are, let's try out our designs and let's keep the furniture for the summer. Mayor Potem Harnick.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did say pick up some of the furniture because I am concerned about that wood furniture out there and I will bet that it is not really treated to to endure our summer. So if there is some sort of furniture, I love the idea of putting out more umbrellas, great idea. And if we can figure out some way to put something out there that just won't get destroyed by our intense heat, I think it's a great idea. And I so love seeing so many people there and and the community it creates. So thank you.
Councilmember Quintanilla.
I I love being able to weave some things together and I I'm inspired by things that both Mayor and Mayor Potem have said. And I'm thinking, would it be possible to have something temporary and durable and build on the success of having the shiny gold star of San Pablo being so energy efficient and sustainable? Is there a way to get benches that are made of recyclable material that would be durable, sustainable, long-lasting and all of those wonderful things that would make it durable? I know the wood is lovely, but if we can make it faux wood in a lot of ways that make it look beautiful, but again durable and keep in line with sustainability, I would be in favor of keeping something during the summer.
Other comments, Councilmember Jonathan and Councilmember Nastante.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, look, I'm going to direct my comments at Lupine Plaza. I'm just not real concerned with the furniture, what type and when and all that. I think staff can figure that out and they've probably gotten some excellent direction from us. What I will focus on is is the bigger picture. I think Lupine Plaza was an experiment and it was extremely successful. So should we continue with it? Yes. But I think we need to do it in a smart way. So just in this meeting alone, we've talked about dining decks, changing them. We're now talking about Lupine Plaza and I think Councilmember Nastandi brings up a very, very cogent point. She reminds us that the first project for the downtown city core that we really contemplated in depth was El Paso sale, in-depth was El Paso sale. We backed off of that. We started with San Pablo Phase One. It's done. We moved on to San Pablo Phase Two. It's almost done, I hope. And that includes CD Link, which also is scheduled to be completed in the late in in summer, early summer, hopefully. I think El Paso is next. I think we need to keep the momentum going. The fact that we're entertaining changes to El Paso on a piecemeal basis concerns me. I think we need to take a step back and make the changes to El Paso that we started to make and complete them and incorporate the dining deck issues, the Lupine Plaza issue and anything else that comes to mind. I'm not necessarily saying to stop Lupine Plaza. I think we can continue in its present format while at the same time contemplating a permanent change that is consistent with the rest of El Paso and with what we will eventually be doing to El Paso. So that's just my thought.
Councilmember Nastante was next and Mayor Potem Harnick.
Yes, so Councilmember Jonathan already stated some of the things I I wanted to say. And I just do want to underscore that I'm all for doing something with Lupine Plaza, but only if we can somehow coordinate it with, if it's not Mr. Gibbs, if we have something that, you know, that we want to try a different consultant, but we've already spent thousands and thousands getting this this study done by Mr. Gibbs and his and his staff, that we should, I believe, include him and his company in redoing dining decks, looking at Lupine Plaza and getting a more complete picture. So that's really what I, and then the only other issue is I did have a restaurant owner that took me by surprise who asked me, when are you going to get rid of Lupine Plaza? And I said, what? You don't, you don't like it? And he's like, well, you know, some of us restaurant owners feel it's taking away from people staying at our restaurants, which I'm not basing my decision on an anecdotal comment. That's why I had asked how many restaurant owners we had talked to. And it's not necessarily that they're opposed to having outdoor space. I think it's more about how does it affect their restaurant? But I think there's a way to overcome that issue. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Harnick.
Thank you. And I do want to stick to the agenda item, which is Lupin Plaza. I I and I appreciate the comments about getting furniture that perhaps is recyclable because we did that on El Paso. All of that is recyclable. It's and it's so great because it's made right in India. So there's lots of pluses to that. I know we want to talk about the Gibbs study. It's not part of the agenda item. We never even settled on a design from the Gibbs study. He provided many different designs. We've never settled on it. I probably am the, maybe the only person here that wasn't 100% sold on everything he provided to us. He had some things that made me question all his research. So I'm sure there's a way, however, that we can incorporate the one or some of the designs that he gave us and then incorporate it into the design of Lupin Plaza. And just more going forward, an idea for those people who are doing the work on this and doing the real work on it summer, be nice to have some misters out there. Thank you.
All right. You're not the only one, Mayor Potem. So there's some eagerness on this council to revisit the Gibbs recommendations and we have reason to believe that our next council meeting will be talking about to help us say a bit more broadly. But for tonight, are we prepared to move option one from staff to give them direction?
So moved.
Councilmember Jonathan.
I was waiting to make a comment, so I'll let the process proceed if there's comments after a second.
Is there a second?
A second?
Enter your comment.
Thank you. I I think in addressing the bigger picture in El Paso, we are exactly on point on what is on the agenda, which is Lupine Plaza, which fundamentally not only fronts onto El Paso, but is part of El Paso. That's why the El Paso merchants are addressing Lupine Plaza. I think to move forward with exploring a design concept without making a decision about whether it should be part of that bigger picture is probably not the most efficient process to undertake. So while I love Lupine Plaza, while I absolutely want to see it flourish and grow and become permanent and something even more special than it is, we need to do it in a smart, thoughtful and cost-effective manner. And that means that we need to look at the bigger picture before moving forward with one component of that bigger picture. So I would not object to seeking professional services, but I think tonight was about getting direction. So if what comes back is not consistent with my concern, I may or may not support it. We're not voting to allocate the funds now. So I I would not object to moving forward, but I would hope that staff incorporates some of the comments, not not universal amongst all all my colleagues, but some of the comments about considering the bigger picture and not taking steps now that potentially would need to be undone at a later time. Thanks.
So noted. So are we ready to vote then or worth or any other comments? Let's vote.
Mayor Potem Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Hi.
Councilmember Nastandi?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Hi.
And Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, as council recommended.
Thank you. I know that we have some folks here who would like to make a comment about item 26. I am going to call for a comfort break. And trust me, if we take a comfort break, we'll be able to focus much better on those comments you've been waiting to make. So we'll be back in 10 minutes. Sappy, are you with us? We'll be back on the record. The next item is number twenty six, request for direction regarding drive through restaurants in the city of Palm Desert. And for those of you who are here to comment on this item, let me explain, we'll start with the staff report. Then we'll have a time for questions from the council. And we'll be more careful on this item to stick with questions. So that we have a chance to hear your comments before we move into discussion. So it will be report, council questions and then comments. So who has this staff report?
I do. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. All right. So just a brief background, currently drive through restaurants are allowed in the freeway overlay district with a conditional use permit. Two thousand seventeen, the city council extended the drive through areas further south along Monterey, which went into the, a little bit of the desert gateway center where Walmart is. Staff continues to receive requests from brokers and owners regarding drive through restaurants, typically along Highway one eleven and some along Fred Waring Drive. February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one, the city council discussed possibly expanding drive through restaurants and directed staff to explore drive throughs through zoning and zoning districts. So this is currently the map that the city staff looked at in identifying, these are our commercial zones. You have the PC two, which is kind of a small commercial center, which is in blue. A PC three, which is in green, which is your large retail centers, that's your Target, Walmart, Costco's. A PC four is more resort, obviously hotels. And then out here is the freeway overlay district where they're currently allowed. So, so these are the colored areas that we examined. Areas that staff would not support are in the downtown area. This is a deep canyon road to Monterey Avenue. This would encompass that area of Highway one eleven, El Paso, San Pablo and parts of Fred Waring. This is strictly meant for, for kind of that civic, you know, mixed use developments. PC two, again, this is the, the smaller scale one. This is typically proximity to residential uses. Deep Canyon, Highway one eleven, you have the Albertson Shopping Center, which backs up to Hidden Palms. That's a good example of one. And then the PC four, which is the resort. Staff just didn't believe that a drive through restaurant is compatible with that kind of resort atmosphere. So this is a map showing where we would not support them. Again, the red, this is that downtown area, which would deserve this zoning as part of the city's general plan and zoning update. Again, the green is the PC for the resort and then the blue is the PC two. Areas so that we would support is really the, the PC three zone. This is again, your large scale, your target shopping centers, your Walmarts. And then obviously we would continue to allow them in the freeway overlay district. So this is a map on where drive throughs could possibly be expanded. Again, along the freeway, these are supported. So some of this area is already identified. And then this is kind of the bulk of the area down here where we get the request. This is just an enlarged version of the zoning map of that area, Highway one eleven, Fred Waring, Town Center, this is Westfield Mall, your Palms to Pines Plaza area here, Desert Crossing, Whole Food Shopping Center, Trader Joe's. So the process, if council agreed to it to expand drive through, staff would recommend that we continue to allow them on a conditional use permit. This would, they would have to be approved by the planning commission. The planning commission would evaluate drive through restaurants. And what they would evaluate is land use compatibility, how the drive through restaurant is compatible with the adjacent neighbors. Parking, parking is going to be key with this, especially with stacking of the number of vehicles. Outreach with businesses and the owners is, is part of the conditional use permit process in regards to parking as well, operations and any site location. As part of the conditional use permit process, it would require approval from the city's architectural review commission. The architectural review commission is tasked with the design of the building, landscaping as a buffer, screening and any screening walls and materials. Development standards and concepts, staff believes that drive through restaurants could be permitted to front a major corridor like Highway one eleven. As long as the drive through lane is not visible along the street. You know, you could do this two ways. You could do this where the building's fronting the street, where the drive through lanes behind, or you can do this with screening it with landscaping. An example would be if this were a Highway one eleven here, you would have the building in front, you would have landscaping, maybe an outdoor patio area. And that's visually what you'd see. And then you would have the drive through lane kind of behind. So this is visually what you would see on Highway one eleven. Instead of, instead of visually seeing the, the drive through lane. This here is the, the former Chase Bank building. Here you have Smart and Final, former Vons and then McDonald's. We do have an applicant that would like to demo this building and build a drive through restaurant here with a drive through lane out here. They do have images and someone will show those. So this would be the, the existing building would be demoed to be somewhere in this area. This, this would be the new pad. You would see a drive through lane here and then they would heavily screen it with wider sidewalks and kind of a landscape buffer. So this is what it looks like today and the concept could be this, where it's heavily screened by, by landscaping. This is the other view of it. And then the concept would be to heavily landscape. You know, there could be some concerns that landscape dies over time, what if the, it's not replaced? The city does have property maintenance, record compliance. Could actually go out there and site and make it force them to maintain landscaping. So a city like, a situation like this could work. Again, development standards. Rest, you know, maybe they could be allowed within the interior of the shopping centers. Again, as part of the conditional use permit, the outreach with business owners is going to be with parking. This is an example. This is in La Quinta. This is the In-N-Out facility here, Highway one eleven. You could see that right here, they have a tunnel with the drive through. This is the drive through lane and you can already see from this aerial that it's stacking and cars are already coming here. Oh, sorry. So this is something had as part of the CUP process that you would want to look for. This, I believe was designed for stacking of twenty eight vehicles, but you could see during lunch hour or dinner services that it's expanding and then you don't want to block this main access so customers can't get to other businesses. So that's an example. You know, maybe in interior desert crossings, there is a lot of parking in this area. This is the target building down here, maybe a drive through pad could work in this area in the corner or over here. You know, I don't, I don't envision one working in front of total wine. This area is very overly parked, Best Buy. So maybe an interior one could work in this area. This is Westfield Mall. I mean, maybe in the back area, it is close to residential. So that could be problematic as well. This is the Waring Plaza, the, the superstore. You have Mint's Warehouse, Outback Steakhouse, PJ Superstore. You know, maybe in this area by Big Five, the drive through could work in this area. Staff doesn't believe that drives these would work in these PC three zones in the interior. This is the Rite Aid Staples Shopping Center. This is always overparked and, and I couldn't see these businesses signing off on a drive through pad in this area. Again, this is the Trader Joe Shopping Center. I, I, I couldn't envision a drive through working here as well. This building on the corner has been vacant for some time. They do have, I think, one or two tenants now. And there's still one or two suites, but this parking is being taken, taken over. This is the Whole Food Shopping Center. You know, I couldn't envision a drive through working in this area and maybe on the corner of this bank wherever converted. But there really isn't a lot of opportunities. This is what I'm getting at for interior. So other development standards would be creating a buffer. A drive through restaurants, you know, cannot be allowed within four or five hundred feet. A buffer is something that we've applied to other businesses. We, we apply it to the, to a massage establishments, which is a thousand feet cannabis, I believe it's fifteen hundred. And then office uses along El Paso where they can't be next to each other. So, so this is something that has been used. And then drive through restaurants cannot be located within five hundred feet of residential zone properties. I did mention the staff report. I think I did indicate two hundred. We did have some letters wherever people, you know, kind of explaining staff agree that two hundred just, just wasn't enough of a buffer. I believe five hundred feet is sufficient. And then drive through restaurants should not be allowed in the PC three zones on the corners. What you want to do is preserve the intersections for, for mixed use developments. I apologize. Mixed use developments or retail uses. Design guidelines, this is kind of long, but, but what we would look at is building architecture. Is it compatible with the existing shopping centers in regards to materials, design, articulation, roofline? Some centers are outdated. But you still want to be compatible. This is a long list. This is things that the Architectural Review Commission tends to look at. The location of mechanical equipment. You don't want the back of the building fronting the street. We do have some bad examples of this, the Red Lobster Building. You can see the big service door fronting Highway one eleven, the new building next to Walmart as well. Lighting plans, obviously you want to make sure that, that all lights are on the property and not trespassing. You know, this one I think is stands out. A lot of cities are looking at drive throughs in regards to emissions, climate control, air, air quality, idling. You know, the ordering boards and speakers shouldn't, shouldn't face residential uses. Again, walls should be decorative. Landscaping and buffers will be key, offsite improvements. Drive through lane should not front or face residential. I mean, the last thing a resident wants is headlights. The amplification, you know, should be toned down. A lockup window should be near the outdoor dining areas. And I think all drive through restaurants should be required to create an outdoor dining area. You know, two hundred and fifty feet is kind of a standard little patio area that, that gives people an option to dine in and also creates kind of a more visual look along the corridor. Other design guidelines, and I kind of touched on this, is obviously that example that I use, parking circulation, stack into the vehicles. That's going to be key as they interact with the existing businesses and the parking lot. You want to make sure that you're not taking away pedestrian access within centers or bike links. You can do this by using different materials. The length and location of the drive through lane. And obviously the existence circulation pattern. So in conclusion, you know, staff believes that, that of drive throughs could be expanded. The PC three zone would be the location. So if council supports, staff does recommend that they direct staff to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment to, to the code twenty five sixteen, that that's where the PC three section is. Zoning ordinance amendment would have to go to planning commission first and then ultimately come back to the, to the city council. And then lastly, if the city council does not support any of staff's concepts or just the idea of expanding drive throughs, then please let us know. Our staff recommends any future direction on drive through restaurants. And then we, obviously we did receive a lot of comments in favor and opposition. I'm sure we'll get to that. But are there any questions of staff?
Um, Mayor Tim Harnick.
I have, what I think is a quick question. You mentioned that you didn't feel that we should have drive throughs. You didn't think it belonged in resort areas. Why not?
I typically don't see, I mean, I guess maybe a three star hotel, but, but typically in the resort atmosphere, you don't really see a drive through restaurant. You want more of kind of a sit down restaurant, I believe.
And I guess maybe then, how are we defining resort?
Just a hotel.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, typically the code requires if your hotel, if you, if you don't serve a full three, three meals a day, that you should have an adjacent restaurant pad. That's why you see how kind of by the freeway, you can see where the Applebee's down there by, by the Courtyard Marriott.
Right. Thank you.
I don't see it very, and I, oh, Councilmember Quinton.
Yes, I was just wondering, I did see that we've got comments in favor and in opposition. I was wondering if there is a tally of how many we received in favor and how many we received against.
You know, unfortunately I did not tally them. I did see that there was a standard email that came through, had that, it was the same, that just had various names on it.
And I do want to assure members of the public that we do positively, absolutely look at each and every written comment that's received. When there are multiple names attached to the same text, of course, that has one impact. Kevin, I, I do have a question about two particular locations that you featured in your presentation. And it's the Trader Joe Shopping Center and the Staples ninety nine cent right, a shopping center. In both of those instances, you pointed out that there isn't space for a drive through in the interior. And your general recommendations foreclose drive through some corners. So I'm wondering why these two locations are included? Since it wouldn't be appropriate on the corners and it wouldn't be appropriate on the interior. And I see it's several of the comments we received, featured these two locations as just too compact and congested to think about. So can you share? So can you share, uh, staff's logic?
No, staff agrees with that. And that's why I, I said that these centers, I don't believe would work. They are zone PC three, so that's why we're, we're treating them. You have to treat all the properties as a PC three zone, but I think if somebody approached the city or staff in, in one of these centers, we want to recommend approval of a drive-through.
Okay, but so it'd be up to, um, the planning commission in the CUP process to remember this trail of crumbs.
Correct. So, so, so if the city council initiates its zoning norms amendment, we put in these standards. You know, you can't be on a corner, you, you would have to analyze it within the parking lot. Somebody approaches staff, they would sit down with staff and before they really even applied for a conditional use, use permit, staff would basically kind of tell them upfront that, that this is an uphill battle.
All right. Councilmember Jonathan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up question to that. Um, Mr. Schwartz, why would you, given the, the question from the mayor, wh- why wouldn't you modify the overlay zone and just include those specific areas you think would work? Rather than make this a PC three modification?
Well, the overlay zone is freeway commercial, so, so we, so we tend to stick it there. I mean, we could come up with a new overlay.
Yeah, it is for now, but we can simply change it to overlay zone or some other name, right? I mean, that would be one way to address concerns about too many areas potentially qualifying is we can actually, correct me if I'm wrong. Could, could we modify the overlay zone such that we would, or even create another zone that would specifically identify the areas that, that a CUP could be applied for rather than making it a broad PC three zoning change?
Yes, you could do that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, Councilmember Quintanilla.
My question for staff is in regards to the sustainability, um, efforts. When it comes time to picking, um, an applicant from all of the, the different, um, proposals that will be received, I'm hoping if there's a way to give additional points or additional consideration for somebody that would come in with, with a high value and high commitment to sustainability. I think it would only be right that if Palm Desert is considering making an exception and making an exception to the ordinances, then it would be something exceptional that we would be requesting from, from developers. And I think that it would be a great way again to keep that commitment. Um, we've heard from Madam Mayor saying that, you know, she feels that Palm Desert is maybe not keeping up with our sister cities with sustainability and this would be a great way to continue to advocate. Thank you.
Yes, so, so as part of the zoning arts amendment or, or overlay, whatever, if, if something is created, you can put that into the standards.
All right, are we ready to hear public comment on this item? Uh, let me invite, uh, members of the public to raise your hand in the same manner as, uh, we did at the beginning. And I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Ruiz Sorano, uh, to call upon you and elevate you for, uh, three minutes of wisdom.
Yes, we have, sorry.
Go ahead, you, you will have our undivided attention.
We have Salima Nurani. Ms. Nurani, you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, you know, I, we are a small business owner here in Palm Desert. And just through conversations with many of my colleagues who are also small business owners, restaurants in particular, we think that there might be some short-sightedness in reviewing this option to allow drive-throughs in the core areas, especially after COVID and all the challenges we've been put through. Um, this type of thinking would really put an additional challenge to those businesses that some of these locations might sort of swallow up those other places. And I want you to just think about when the last time you've been at a, um, shopping center in another city. If you saw a Chick-fil-A or Raising Canes, did you notice any other restaurants nearby? Or did you just get focused in on the big guy that was there that had the convenient drive-through? I get the understanding, I have kids who would love to have some of these great cool places. However, I think there's a time and place for these restaurants or for these, um, drive-through options. I don't think the time is right now. I do think the place is better served when it's closer to the interstate exits such as towards I-ten. Um, I also do think that we have a unique brand in Palm Desert where we allow and encourage and attract unique small offerings. And I would like to see Palm Desert continue to preserve that brand that Palm Desert has. It's different from La Quinta, different from Cat City, um, different from Palm Springs. And I think that the council has done a great job over the years to preserve that brand. And I would like to see that, um, image of Palm Desert to be continued. Not that we're saying no to all these big, wonderful, cool kids to the party, but maybe to allow, um, a little bit more space for the small guys to survive, especially after such a tough year. I, I do appreciate there's, that, that presentation was really helpful. I, I do see things in a different light and definitely understand it better. So I appreciate that effort. However, I still feel that, um, the unique offerings in Palm Desert would be affected by a decision like this in these areas. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
And thank you for waiting through twenty-five items. I extend that thanks to all others who are about to speak. So who is next?
Matthew Bush, you have three minutes to speak.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council and Staff. This is Matthew Bush from the Palm Supines Shopping Center. Uh, where we have the Chase, or the former Chase Bank building. And, uh, I, I'd like to thank staff for the presentation showing those slides of what we put together, what's a possibility. I'd like to touch on a few, few items, uh, that were brought up and our potential design. Uh, one item is that we've got, we have a twelve thousand square foot building there right now that is vacant, it's mostly vacant. We have, the rest of the tenants are going to move in line to the shopping center on the sides of the Smart and Final. So we'll have a vacant building shortly. Uh, Chase was the major tenant, they had ten thousand feet and they have moved. Uh, we have the opportunity to put, uh, a drive-through restaurant in and, and one of the companies that we've been speaking with, Raising Canes, is a tenant of ours and quite a few shopping centers in Southern California. They've got five hundred locations in the United States. Their, uh, store, each store employs an average to seventy, of seventy to eighty people with wages starting at fourteen dollars an hour for each team member. In addition to the team members, each store has three to four full-time management positions with executive level salaries. So we've got major job growth that we can bring to the city. This isn't a relocation from somewhere else, uh, or like the Chase Bank moving down the street. This is a new business coming into Palm Desert. But I think will, um, will provide a, a lot of, a lot of new money to the city. Um, Glass Door, which is an online jobs rating agency, is listed Raising Canes in the top one hundred places to work in the United States in, uh, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-nineteen, twenty-seventeen. And Raising Canes is actively involved in each community, uh, where it conducts business. So that's a compliment to the uniqueness of Palm Desert. They, they happily support local sports teams, um, uh, pet welfare, education, business development and entrepreneurship and a lot of other items like that. Um, Southern California stores for Raising Canes average about six and a half to seven million dollars annually in sales. This store would be projected to do eight million dollars, which, which would bring a lot of sales tax revenue to the city. Um, I want to touch on the design now. Uh, we, we tried to incorporate a lot of the San Pablo district uh, design elements into what, what we have with that thirty-foot landscape setback. We have the opportunity to, um, create something community-oriented that is currently not community-oriented and try to create a balance between a pedestrian, uh, oriented use or pedestrian access and vehicular use. And, uh, we're, we're certainly, we're certainly capable.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Uh, who is next?
We have Brad Anderson. Mr. Anderson, you have three minutes to speak.
Yes, hi, uh, great, uh, you know, name be my name. Yeah, I didn't even give you any, but that's great. Um, uh, again, my name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancho Mirage and, and I just have a little insight I'd like to share. Um, just one thing I noticed, uh, on your agenda today, I noticed that you, uh, stuck in twenty-six A and it looks like a memorandum. And that wasn't on there in the morning, uh, agenda when I looked at it. And I thought that probably should have just be placed in the active agenda. That's just something to consider. I'm not a stickler for this kind of stuff, but, uh, I know public participation has been, uh, waning, uh, in the valley. So, uh, anyway, uh, back to the agenda item, um, let's see. And ending that memorandum, I noticed the staff was mainly concerned about blocking drive-throughs from view. And I, I thought, well, that's really not the chief concern. I think the chief concern is neighboring properties and that's usually residential. And, and if they have a problem, uh, and it's going to be affecting them negatively, even businesses, uh, with traffic noise and, and of course pollution, uh, that all factors that has to be, uh, addressed. And I think changing the game when other people played the game for decades and, you know, that's not fair to them. Um, I had out of town guests and, and this is a tourist spot. People come here all the time. I, and, uh, they usually stay in Palm Springs, but, uh, I think they did last time. But, uh, they, they eat in these little places. They, uh, they told me about a place in Cathedral City I never even knew of. And they loved it. And so these people that come in, they're not looking for the big name brands usually, you know, maybe In-N-Out. That's a bad example, uh, but, uh, uh, let's see, what else was I going to say? I'm sorry. Uh, and, uh, just one comment too. I noticed, uh, it's probably years ago now, council, one of the current council members on your board, uh, they made a complaint concerning used car sales over at the Westfield Mall. And I thought, well, that's pretty petty, but that's my opinion. Uh, and I thought, well, drive-throughs and used cars and car lots, they all go together. So you should probably revisit that if you allow drive-throughs in these areas. Care to allow car lots too, uh, because that's a win-win, right? And just one more thing with my In-N-Out in Rancho Mirage, which is apparently going to be built. Uh, at the end of the meeting, you know, you got council members hugging developers. So, uh, if I see that, then I will know, but, uh, that's all I have. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Who's next?
Next, we have James Arthur. Mr. Arthur, you have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you, oh, hi. Um, hi, my name is Skip Page and I'm a business owner in Palm Desert. Um, I own a, a restaurant on Highway one eleven near San Pablo. Um, I'm not in favor of drive-throughs along the one-eleven corridor area. Um, specifically, I just, I, I think that that property that in particular you're speaking about, that's over there by the Smart and Final, you know, if you need to tear that building down, you know, bu- build a building where you can have two or three locally owned awesome restaurants. Not some chain chicken store with a neon sign. That's not Palm Desert. It works at the, at the freeway for sure. And that's what drive-throughs are for, for people that are driving from one place to another needing to make a quick stop. Um, so I am definitely not in favor of those, uh, anything there along one-eleven as far as the drive-through. Thank you.
Thank you. And who's next?
We have Scott Len, Len Gro, Mr. Len Gro, if you have three minutes.
Does he know he's still muted?
Yeah, does he know he's on mute?
Mute. I'm sorry about that. I, I didn't realize. Thank you so much. Uh, I, I, I spoke last time and I, I just wanted, uh, wanted you all to know, thank you for having me again. But I, I'm a, I'm a Palm Desert resident. I live in Montecito Estates at Cook and Country Club. And, uh, I also, um, I make my living bringing regional and national tenants to the city of Palm Desert, uh, among other places, uh, in Southern California. And, and of all of the, the centers that were, were, uh, put on display earlier in, in, uh, staff's very well-done presentation, I have placed national and regional tenants in every one of them. Uh, and I represent Raising Canes, uh, among others. And I've done probably a hundred-plus drive-through locations in Southern California in the last five years. So, so I come with, with great experience and understanding drive-throughs. I understand retail, uh, as that's where I make my living. And I have choose to live in Palm Desert and I'll speak as a Palm Desert resident, not a Rancho Mirage resident. Um, I, I believe that, that we're losing sight of what Highway one-eleven, I mean, people are saying this is so unique. I mean, I live here and it's a regional mall and a regional retail artery. It, it, El Paseo is, is incredibly unique. And, and I guess sometimes I would question, you know, what we all think as residents, uh, that love this city and live here. You know, uh, think of, of what Highway one-eleven is. Um, I, I relish the restaurants. I probably, uh, I think during COVID, I probably put on twenty-five pounds. And I've spent all that money on local restaurants, uh, and, and regional restaurants as well. And, and, you know, I, I, I think that having a, a good mix of everything that makes the constituents of our city happy is, is something that's good for the city. It isn't just about only having local restaurants and only having, uh, local purveyors, especially when you have an, an eight-hundred-thousand-square-foot regional mall sitting across the street. And I'm not a proponent of putting drive-throughs everywhere. That is not what I'm trying to say. What I do think is that providing a convenience for people such that they don't have to drive up to I-ten when you, when you live on the west side of Palm Desert, that's a trek. Uh, I think it provides a convenience for people that gives them an opportunity of choice. And it doesn't mean that our local purveyors of, uh, and restaurant owners should suffer. It's, it's, it's a, you know, it's a nine-dollar ticket, um, that, that is good for the city. But I also look at functional obsolescence. And when I drive one-eleven, which I do on a daily basis, I see more for lease signs than I've ever seen. I've see, I see more functional obsolete, obsolete buildings than I've ever seen. And, and that as a resident, more than what I do for a living, you know, bothers me because I believe that there's such a great opportunity for Palm Desert to, uh, enhance the one-eleven corridor.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
I see one more hand currently.
Yes, uh, this is Ray Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, you have three minutes.
Hello, uh, esteemed council and staff. Uh, thank you for your time. I do have two thank yous. Last time I appeared in front of you, it was on El Paseo five-story buildings. And I thank you for preserving our height limit there. Um, I also want to thank you on behalf of my fellow restaurateurs for the support the city of Palm Desert gave us during COVID. Um, I hadn't heard anything like this across the country. Uh, the way you stepped up for our local industry, thank you, thank you, thank you. As regards today's issue of drive-throughs on one-eleven, let me go on record, I have nothing against Raising Kane, nor do any other restaurant concept. This is a hard business and we do it. I am against drive-throughs in this protected corridor. Council, uh, asked staff to look at some things and I think that's good and wise. I think we ought to review things regularly. Uh, we ought to know why we're doing things, not just historically, we've always done it that way. I did note in the staff presentation, something that, um, that, that struck me uh, along the lines of Council Quintanilla's comments. Uh, in the staff presentation, there were about twelve little cars drawn in and then idling, I'm assuming. And then in the In-N-Out overshot, there were about twenty. That was a quick count. But, uh, council has mentioned, uh, energy efficient sustainability. Uh, I don't see where that matches with idling cars in Palm Desert. I know over the years we've worked very. I know over the years, we've worked very, very hard to synchronize lights throughout our valley. So cars would not sit idling. So I struggle with that. Again, my concerns is not with competition. If you're in my business, you welcome competition. You learn from each other. Hopefully you befriend each other and you work with each other. It is about quality of life here in Palm Desert. We all value this as a special place. But the natural landscape alone doesn't do it. It's been maintained special and protected. Um, the unique opportunities of life are what are most meaningful for us. You know, whether it's a prom or watching your kid play Little League, or whether you're raising money and it's dinner with Father Lincoln. It is a uniqueness that is special to us in life. When people talk about dining in Palm Desert, I hear people talk about old-time places like Romeo's, Cleve's, Iron Gate, Sunshine Meat Fish and Liquor. All those have been replaced. Now we have Castelli's, we have, uh, Il Corso, uh, we have Julian's. Um, these are unique to Palm Desert and it doesn't have to be high-end. We have John's Burgers, we have Cactus Jack's. Um, these, these are Palm Desert efforts. And I'd like to see that, but we also have fast food and we count them among, among our most prized neighbors. We have Carl Carter with Carl's Jr. We have The Walkers with Del Taco. We have Shaloo with McDonald's. We have these things here in Palm Desert, but they play by our rules. And we have had corporations come in and try to push us around. Chase Bank has been mentioned. They tried to do that where I have the Cork Tree Restaurant, which reminds me of Council Jonathan's remark about one's man's trash is another's treasure. Well, that's what people said about both sites I now occupy. They said that about the cafe site.
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
And I see another hand now.
George Argiros. Mr. Argiros, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, George.
Good evening. I am George Argiros and I'm with John's Restaurant, Palm Desert. I oppose drive-throughs along Highway eleven Palm Desert for a number of reasons. Drive-throughs are not good for the environment. They create pollution, they create noise, they increase traffic and accidents. Drive-throughs drive down property values. Drive-throughs are not consistent with the Palm Desert lifestyle. Palm Desert is known for golf, tennis, dining, shopping. I don't think it's known for drive-through, drive-throughs. Uh, finally, uh, I think allowing drive-throughs on Highway eleven, it would be totally unfair to myself, my business and some other business. We've been playing by the rules for the last thirty-five years. And I think it would be unfair to allow somebody at this time, thirty-five years later, to be able to operate under different rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who has commented. I don't see any other hands raised. Sandra, is that everyone?
Yes, it is.
All right, then, uh, we're ready for discussion. Who would like to get us started? Councilmember Nastan, please unmute.
There. Now, can you hear me? There we go. Very good. I just want to say I appreciate all the comments that I heard, especially from our local restaurant owners. I so appreciate them and, and recognize many of them. And I, you know, have been their biggest supporter during this whole shutdown. I, you know, on a personal level and on a business level have felt awful for what they've been through. So I don't believe this issue though of drive-throughs, uh, somehow is mutually exclusive to their future success. And I do believe we can also accommodate a few drive-ins in key locations. I'm not saying everywhere. And it is true that the Westfield Mall is a regional mall. And I, I believe in giving our residents and visitors some kind of choice. And we can still keep our uniqueness with our family-owned businesses. I don't believe it's mutually exclusive. And then in terms of the environment, I believe our biggest issue is, is our dust living here in a desert, especially when the wind picks up and to a lesser extent, uh, leaf lowers. But our, in California, as we all know, we're moving towards electric clean energy cars. And the cars of today are also environmentally much more friendly than the old cars were. And I saw statistics that our CO2 emissions are back to like nineteen ninety-two levels. So we're doing a good job there. So my opinion is that I support our local restaurants, but I also do want to see a couple of drive-throughs. Those, those are my comments.
Thank you. Hi, councilmember Quintanilla, are you ready to share?
Sure, I have a lot of different ideas from a lot of different places. And, um, one that, that sticks out is, um, I, I also, I agree with, uh, with councilmember Nastan that these don't have to be mutually exclusive. And I think that if we tie things back to the beginning of the presentation, I made a, a little note when they said that in nineteen ninety-four was when Sunline Transit Agency made the decision. But back then it was the Sun Bus. That's what we all knew it as. And at the time, they even had the catchy jingle, hop on the Sun Bus, it's the natural gas bus. And it was infectious and, and caught on. And I'm sure you can YouTube it if you're so inclined. But I think that if we look now where they are, they are a forefront, they are pioneering. So where would we be had they not taken the action to go in a different direction? I completely agree that now our vehicles are cleaner. You buy a new vehicle, you don't have to have it small, tested in the same intervals as before. We have more hybrid vehicles, we have more electric vehicles. And what I remember from, um, a conversation with one of the developers is that the idea is that, that for example, Raising Cane's, they have a, a twin kitchen. It's a twin restaurant. So they would not have anybody waiting for their meal to be cooked and potentially confused with the drive-through. It would be a dedicated drive-through. And I think that as, I don't know when the last time that any of the current council members, um, lived on minimum wage. And I can tell you that not too long ago, I had a job where I was making twelve dollars and forty-six cents an hour. As a single parent, that is excruciatingly difficult. And I have a very hard time understanding how we could say that we, we could deny somebody those opportunities and hearing the way that the salaries are coming in for management level, knowing that they're not going to be transplants from another area. There will be jobs that are going to be offered here locally. I've, I've heard a lot of how it's unfair to current, um, restaurant owners. And I think times change. We're not going to say, hey, broadband is unfair to those with dial-up because we've had dial-up longer. Progress needs to happen. We have to move forward. On Wednesday, I was at the Palm Desert Area Chamber breakfast with everyone there. It was lovely to finally meet in person. And what I walked away with most is that our, our business owners are looking for new ways to reinvigorate and, and to bring new ideas forward. And I think that we would be limiting ourselves very drastically if we were to be as, as short-sighted and, and dare I say myopic, to think that a complete ban would be what is necessary. I'm in favor of understanding that there's not a one-size-fits-all model. We need to find the Venn diagram where we overlap and find some sustainability. I think that being the proximity, for example, to Westfield, I think it would allow walkable space if this is designed properly and, and find another way to tie it into San Pablo. There's a lot of opportunities to bring, to bring revitalization. The last time I was inside the Westfield Mall, I was very depressed to see so many things empty as well. And this would be the kind of opportunity where somebody could stop and park and walk and have a lot of, um, a lot of vision. And I think the part that, that I'm hearing a lot is hearing, it's Palm Desert is unique. Every human being is unique, just like everybody else. Every city is unique, just like every other city. And I don't think that Palm Desert has anything other than maybe individuals saying that we are so drastically different. I think that if we want to keep moving forward, we need to find how to adapt. And I, I fully support finding modifications and finding a common sense solution, something sensible, something middle ground. We can't say everywhere, but we can't say not at all.
Councilmember Jonathan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, those comments from both councilmember Quintanilla and Nastan resonate with me. Um, but so do the comments, uh, that express concerns about, uh, increasing the number of drive-throughs. And I, I'll reiterate, this is not a question about whether Palm Desert allows them or not. It's whether, because we already have them. It's about whether we modify what we have. Um, and the comments from those that are concerned, particularly our restaurateurs, absolutely resonate with me. Um, I think when that sector of our economy talks, we need to listen and we do listen, as Mr. Rodriguez, um, so articulately said. So I, I've really, you know, I've kept an open mind about this because I think it is an important issue. And, and I have shifted, um, my thinking in part, uh, you know, at an initial glance, I thought, I-111 is I-111. We just, you know, change that zoning and allow it. And as councilmember Quintanilla said, it's not an all or nothing. And I think there is compromise here. Perhaps the most persuasive part of, of the, the argument against restaurants is that we're somehow changing the character of Palm Desert. And I owe it to everyone to be honest. I, I have a hard time getting my arms around that. I mean, this is Highway one-eleven. Um, it has chain hotels, you know, Spring Hill Marriott, has chain stores, Walmart, Big Five. Uh, it has chain restaurants. I mean, Red Lobster, Olive Garden, Outback, uh, and so on and so forth. So I'm not seeing that unique locally-owned, forty-year tradition type restaurant on, on, and, and stores and hotels on one-eleven, um, and a giant mall. Uh, so I see some level of compatibility. I mean, let's, let's look at I-111 for what it is. It, it's, it's a very fast throughway. There's a lot of commercial, uh, with a wide array. Uh, it is not a cozy, cute little downtown area. El Paso, absolutely. San Pablo, absolutely. Would any of us propose drive-throughs and anywhere near, you know, on, on El Paso or San Pablo? No. I see as a possible solution and compromise, very limited and very carefully planned, designed and approved drive-throughs on some limited locations along Highway one-eleven. My suggestion is to let staff go back to the drawing board. I wouldn't mess with the PC-three ordinance. That's too broad. Let's either modify the existing overlay zone or create a special overlay zone for Highway one-eleven. And let's specifically identify, as we did with cannabis, what shopping centers frankly, you know, what PC-three, um, uh, zoning, specific, not all of them, but specifically which ones on one-eleven we're willing to live with. That might be two or three. Um, I, I, I think there might be a compromise solution there by severely limiting the number of drive-throughs and identifying the locations that we would find acceptable. I would also suggest, because there are so many gauntlets for allowing the drive-through, that I think we have some level and measure of comfort that we won't get something that we're unhappy with. Uh, in fact, we, we heard ARC approval, we heard Planning Commission approval. I would add city council approval, uh, to that list. Um, so with those comments and, and more to come, perhaps one way to move through with this is to direct staff to listen to our feedback and come back with a revised recommendation. Thank you.
Mayor Tim Arnick?
Thank you. I, I just heard a, a lot of great comments and, and thank you for all your thoughtfulness in what was said. And I, I do want to first comment that without a doubt, the staff has taken a tremendous amount of time putting together what they put through, what, what together. And I know how busy we are and between Dining Dex, Loop and Lane, all these other things at Loop and Plaza, you've got a lot to do. And we added that to your plate. So I thank you for the time. I, I, I guess there's two things I look at and I'm going to start with one. We started our, our meeting tonight receiving a sustainability award, right? It was about an active, healthy and safe community. That was how we started our, our meeting. Because we're sustainable. We work towards that. So we don't have necessarily the luxury of looking at things through immediacy. Uh, and, and I was thinking about something the other day, in fact, and, and, uh, councilmember Quintanilla brought it up about at the breakfast. And I was thinking about it long and hard at that breakfast, that one of the things about Palm Desert that was so impressive going through COVID was what past councils did. Because they were so fiscally prudent. And because of their fiscal, fiscally conservative approaches to things, there was an account with, that we could use to help our businesses and to help our community members who needed help paying their rent. And that's because of a past council. So we don't have the luxury of saying, this is what we want today. What we do today affects tomorrow and we have to look long and hard at that and be careful with that. Because I think, what was the gentleman's name? I think it was Mike who lives over in Montecito. He chose Palm Desert. We didn't have drive-throughs and he chose Palm Desert. So it's just, it, it's, does it make it or break it? Why you move, I mean, let's think, think about that. So we have to look through a lens of public service and the future of our community when we're making these decisions. And you're right, one-eleven is a fast throughway and that's why we changed the zoning. That's why we have all those new designs in the general plan update and why we had the discussions at Envision Palm Desert was a way to slow people down. We're looking at ways to narrow lanes and slow people down. CV, the CBAG is working long and hard on CV sync to synchronize our signals throughout the valley to make people work, go through at a better speed and not stop and not idle either. So I was thinking about some of the things we all do and I know we all have so many committees and commissions. I was thinking about CBAG and RCTC who are working long and hard to put grade separations in our valley to stop people from idling and for safety reasons. So what we're doing, and then we say, well, let's put solar in. Well, solar is a given. Of course they should put solar in. Of course they should. That has nothing to do with a car idling. These are two separate issues. Of course they should. And we just signed letters, all of us, I'm sure in our capacity, one way or another, trying to get earmarks of the ARPA money that's coming down. And we tried to get that, we all signed those saying, yeah, this is about clean air. This is about air quality. Coincidentally, May is National Asthma Month. Just a little aside. So, you know, there was talk about, in the last few meetings, we keep talking about sustainability. And we keep talking about the number of cars we're taking off the street. What are our green offerings? What can we do better? Well, here's something we could do better. We can ask that we don't have cars idling. That would be important. I don't think we're raising any bars. We're lowering a bar. To me, getting drive-throughs is like taking a step backwards in time. It's not about going forward. This isn't progress. This is devolving. Screaming hiding cars, that doesn't stop them from spewing noxious elements that we're going to breathe. It, it just doesn't. So I, I want to say something else too. I mean, that's all about the environment. But one of my colleagues talked about the charm and the appeal of, of Palm Desert. And I, I absolutely agree. And there's nothing like walking into Casuelas Cafe and being greeted by the owner or going to Musashi, seeing Stella Lee, or going to John's and seeing George. There is a certain charm and appeal to that. And these are the people who have been supporting our community all along. I'm not saying we're not going to get some chains. Of course we are. But let's not make that our focus. Let's do what we can to support our local and unique offerings and create an environment that encourages more local and unique offerings. And I think we've been doing a good job at that. And I think we don't want to take steps back. So those are just a few of my comments. I got more.
So I'll add some thoughts to the.
So I'll add some thoughts to the mix. First, I want to deeply thank staff because you were asked to look thoughtfully at this and come up with some alternatives. And it's clear, as others have said, that you put in immense amount of work into this and it has many thoughtful components. And I equally appreciate all of the remarks my colleagues have made, which all have merit, at least in part. But ultimately, as I look at this, I'm persuaded that we're fashioning a solution in search of a problem. And it's distracting us from our goals as a city. It's not one of our goals to encourage more eateries that tend to have unhealthy food. That's not a gift to people at any income level. And I'll drop a footnote to say I certainly indulge in fats food. But it's not a city called to encourage more of that. It's not a city called to encourage significant additional distribution of food in disposable packages. And think about this, the state of California is imposing really harsh requirements on our sit-down restaurants to segregate food waste. Drive-throughs produce a tremendous amount of paper and food waste that ends up, Lord knows where. On my walks, sometimes I see it ends up in the middle of the street. It's not a city goal of Palm Desert to foment, to cause more of that. And it's distracting us, heading down this path is distracting us from things that are city goals. When we look at Highway 111 and we're disappointed because it looks too much like any other strip of roadway in Southern California. Our goal is to find ways to encourage more unique local offerings to disrupt that. Our goal, which we've talked about a great deal, is to find underutilized buildings that could be converted to mixed use to bring residents to the area who become built-in customers for the rest of the retail that's there. So I hate to see us distracted from our goals to improve that space to what others choose for it. I loved Councilmember Kitania's reference to Sunline. I may draw different inferences from that. In my estimation, what made that decision in 1994 so great was that Sunline was bucking the trend. Gas was cheapest. It was a struggling agency. And nobody else took the path they picked, but they bucked the trend to build something better for the future. And I believe that Palm Desert is similarly called to buck the trend now and not simply to what's easiest, not to the first thing that developers may grab hold of as an opportunity, but discover what it takes to incentivize the different kind of mixed-use development and unique offerings that we can enjoy 10 years, 15 years, 20 years from now and celebrate today's decision in the same way that we celebrate Sunline's decision of 1994. I'm completely empathetic to concerns about folks who are older or mobility impaired. But thank heavens, the pandemic has taught everybody how to do curbside. And so you don't have to leave your car to get food. You can park your car and turn off the engine and have food delivered to you. I'm completely empathetic to the person who's trying to eat on a budget, whether it's a 12-hour, an hour employee or anyone else who has to face a tight budget. And we have opportunities in Palm Desert to eat inexpensively. Ultimately, what I want to do for that person is focus on our objective as a city to diversify the economy so we have many, many more better paid jobs. So, Councilmember Jonathan, I appreciate greatly your effort to find some compromise. But my fear is that it would become a horn's nest with unintended collateral damage for folks who have already decided to cite their drive-through, for example, at Monterey Crossing. And we're told the existing freeway overlay district was their only opportunity. So for that reason, my preference would be that we thank staff for giving us the opportunity to explore and that we redirect our attention back to our stated goals instead of engaging in what I really see as trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. Councilmember Jonathan, and then Councilmember Kitania.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I, I agree with probably well over 90% of, of all your comments. I, I really do. I, 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 one thing I, I don't necessarily see, I, I don't see this as a distraction. Obviously, we've touched a nerve. Each one of us has so much to say and very thoughtful remarks. So I, I think this is not a distraction, this is the business of the city. I also don't see that we're solving a problem that doesn't exist. We, we've got businesses coming to us and asking to do business in our city, and I think we owe them a response, whether that's yea or nay. But I, I, I don't see this issue, you know, we didn't initiate it. So I, I, I don't think we're, we're in, you know, look at creating a solution when, when a problem doesn't exist. The goals that you stated are so important to all of us. And the unique character of Palm Desert, which has kept me in this town for well over four decades, is critically important to all of us. I just don't see these two things as mutual exclusive, mutually exclusive. I think there's, there's a compromise in the solution there. I, I will say that we, we don't want to make an assumption that drive-throughs are unhealthy food. Today's drive-throughs, frankly, I've been fortunate enough to eat at some of our very fine dining establishments and the calories and everything else that I digest after that meal is way over the top compared to some of these healthy convenience drive-throughs that we're seeing pop up, including, including Raising Canes, by the way. I, as, as you all know, I share the concerns about the environment, and I've said it before, and I'm going to say it real quick. I think you should be, if you're concerned about 12 or 20 cars stacking up, then let's look at opting into desert community energy where we can take 80,000 cars, equivalent of those emissions off the street. If you're really serious about the environment, let's talk DCE. And then the, the unique character of, of Highway 111 is, that's a different comment than the unique character of Palm Desert. If we add two or three drive-throughs, essentially not visible, I'm not, I, I have that concern, but I'm not yet sold that that's a violation of our unique character. So the solution, and I, and let me make it in the form of a motion, so we move this forward potentially. I, I'd like to continue the matter. I, I'd like to send it back to staff and direct them to look at either amending the overlay zone or creating a new zone that would specifically identify and limit where and how many drive-throughs would exist. And then would add council approval in addition to Planning Commission and ARC. And frankly, be creative and open-minded and take into consideration all the other concerns that were voiced today and, and see if, and not just amongst the council, but amongst the, the public comments that we've got, which were so valuable. And see if they can come up with some creative compromise solutions that kind of checks off all the boxes. So that's a long motion, but there you have it.
Let's see if there's a second for that before taking further comment.
Second.
And to add the floor for comment.
I, I am hearing a lot of the same wonderful points, but from where I stand, I see the same thing, but with a different lens. I think that when we discuss sustainability and the idea that we don't want any more bulky packaging, I think it's a great time to discuss perhaps a Styrofoam ban in Palm Desert so that we can truly be green and truly continue forward. But right now, that wouldn't be a good time because that wouldn't be beneficial to all of our existing customers. So we, we've got to find the tide, we've got to find where is that balance, and we have to surf through it. If we're talking about reducing cars on the road, well, let's commit to having more bus stops. We are desperately, it's obscene how dire we need more public transportation in the Coachella Valley. I think that that's not going to happen anytime soon. Realistically, there's a lot of money that has to come in while we wait on that federal innovation to come through. We have little minor changes that we can make. And I think that not only having a, a drive-through with solar, again, that's a given, but I think that we can increase the number of, of charging stations that we have. Palm Desert pioneered having the first free ones in the Coachella Valley. And I think that this is another opportunity to move forward with more. As an asthmatic, I completely and wholeheartedly agree that there's environmental factors, but in, in agreeing with, with Councilmember Nastande, we have much greater issues of impact to asthmatics like myself. And I can use myself as an example because my family moved here in 1984 when I was in kindergarten, specifically because my life was so in danger where I lived before because of severe asthma. The Salt and Sea has become such an ecological disaster, that is a much more pressing issue. So if we're going to bring this on, on moments of sustainability and ecology, there's a lot more that we can do.
Thank you. And, um, Mayor Pro Tem Harnick had her hand up and, and Councilmember Nastande, perhaps you'll have the last word.
I'll, I'll just share something. I, I do think it's distracting us from our goals because our goals were to put mixed use on 111. And I'm sure that they could take those buildings. And if you look at the SCAG awards, you'll see some wonderful repurposing of buildings that created, helped communities deal with Rena numbers, helped house people that needed housing. And they took buildings that existed and they repurposed them. Perhaps that's what they can do. I love the landscape that they showed us on that land because I went through the other day and that landscape has been neglected, terribly neglected. So you can fix the landscape that currently is there, and that would be nice for that. Everyone in the community and all the existing tenants that are there. I feel like we're chipping away at what we sat down with when we came up with the general plan update and the envision. And you chip away and you chip away and then all of a sudden it's gone. And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go into a mom moment here that occasionally I do. First, I'm going to mention something else. Chick-fil-A wanted to come in, wanted a drive-through, never will come to Palm Desert because we wouldn't let them have a, a drive-through where they wanted it. They wanted it on Monterey 111. We said, no, it really isn't the right place for it. They walked away angry, would never come to Palm Desert where they're building right now in Palm Desert. So they can find a way to build in Palm Desert, and we welcome them to Palm Desert in the right area. And I know these developers have grand plans. And maybe our standards, our general plan update, doesn't make their plans. Maybe they don't integrate that well. And here's my mom moment, maybe they have to work a little harder. Because if the right thing were the easy thing, everybody would do the right thing. And I'm asking those developers with that wonderful piece of land there, that's so important, across from those great gardens and in a wonderful location, high visibility, high daily traffic count, work a little harder and find the right thing for that space. Thank you.
Councilmember Nastande. Well, what is very clear to me is that my fellow council members, Mayor Kathleen Kelly and Mayor Pro Tem Jan Harnick, you are, are, you have strong convictions. And I don't see how postponing this to a future vote will change anything regardless of what staff comes back to. And we've, we've already are using so much of staff's time and they've presented information this evening that basically just shows that they recommend it only in a few places. So I, I believe we have the information to take a yes or a no vote and not prolong it any longer because we basically will be repeating what we just did this evening in either the next council meeting or the one sometime in the summer. So I believe we have the information to take a yes or a no vote. And I don't see that anything I can say or do will change my fellow council members' opinions.
Uh, Councilmember, I promised you the last word, but that was not my right to promise. So Councilmember Kitania.
We're, we're all evolving and trying to figure it out. I, I am very close to supporting what, what Councilmember Nastande says, that I think we're close. But for me, in order to motion to perhaps make that vote now, I would want to feel that there is a commitment to sustainability. Again, if we're going to make an exception to our ordinances, I think that there needs to be another exceptional commitment and not just yea, approved, move forward. I, I really think that it needs to be very, very intelligently done. And I think that in order to properly respect staff time because they are so, so spread thinly with all that they have to do, I think it's best to let them have all of the right time to do this conscientiously so that we don't have to come back and say, you know, we should have thought of it better, we should have ordered it, we should have put the and or the comma, it can come down to all of the little things. So out of respect for staff's time, I don't want to jump in. It looks like we have enough support, but I think to properly respect staff's time and address all of these concerns, I think that we can have a little bit more time.
Okay, let me just clarify, thank you. Let me just clarify, uh, Councilmember Jonathan didn't move to just postpone. He moved to change the approach. So would you like to speak to that, Councilmember Jonathan? Please do.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate you pointing that out. And to Councilmember Nastande's point, what I was seeking to do was essentially a scaled down version of what came before as a staff's recommendation. I am not comfortable with simply amending the PC three zone. I think leaves it wide open. I think it does open the door to some of the concerns that were expressed today, which is more perhaps of the drive-throughs than, than we want. So what I'm seeking to do is a scaled down kind of compromise solution that limits the number of drive-throughs on 111 and identifies the specific locations that they would be permitted if they pass the whole CUP process. So the, you know, postponing the matter, continuing the matter was really just to give staff an opportunity to do that and to come back to us. And, you know, I, I'm not saying that that would pass. I don't know, maybe some minds would be changed, maybe not. But it gives us another bite at the apple. Let's just look at a scaled down version of what's being proposed that may or may not be that compromise solution that, that checks off all the boxes. So that's what I was going for.
So my advice to those of you, Councilmember Nastande and Councilmember Kitania, who have voiced support. who have voice support for drive-throughs is that it probably makes sense to vote for councilmember Jonathan's motion since that's your best path to move forward toward that goal. And I'm sure Mayor Protem Harnick, and I will keep an open mind and look at what staff comes back with. So are we ready to vote? Please take the vote.
Mayor Protem Harnick?
Well, I look forward to seeing what staff comes back with, but no.
Okay. Councilman Jonathan?
You both know, you don't get to see it. Hi.
Councilman Nastan. Councilmember Nastan?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
No.
Motion carries three, two, to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Well, with instructions.
Okay.
Instructions.
B or with instructions?
With instructions, as councilmember Jonathan described, to define a new overlay district where our drive-throughs would be permitted with conditions as suggested, adding city council approval. Does that do it?
Thank you.
And I commend us all because we've kept our senses of humor. So that's unanimous. We are ready for item 27. Request for commencement of the fiscal year 2021-22 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program Application Process and Submission of the Fiscal Year 2021-22 Action Plan. Do we have a staff report?
Bear with me for one moment. Very good. Great. And if I can just see just one nod that you see a presentation, just great. Thank you very much. So good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Chris Gary with your city manager's office. And the item before you this evening is a public hearing and consideration of fiscal year 2122, the Community Development Block Grant Program, also known as CDBG. The city's federal allocation for CDBG funds this upcoming year is approximately 419,000, which represents about a $9,000 increase from last year, which does not include CARES Act funding. The recommendations are allocated across three eligible categories, which include public services, public facilities and improvements, as well as program administration. Public services is capped at 15% of the total funds, which has historically been used for services by local and regional nonprofit agencies to serve low and moderate income residents. Public facilities and improvements, which does not have funding limitations, has been typically used for, to fund capital improvements of facilities operated by nonprofits. As of, as of last year, the city shifted towards allocating some funds towards neighborhood improvements in CDBG eligible areas. And finally, program administration is capped at 20%, which is used for overall grant management as well as federally mandated fair housing services. So regarding public services, there's five funding recommendations this upcoming year and descriptions of the proposed services are included in the staff report. To highlight one of the new activities proposed this year, the outside agency funding committee recommends $10,000 to desert access and mobility, which was formerly desert blind and handicapped. This agency provides transportation services to individuals who are blind, disabled, or who cannot drive safely. And although the services are more than just transportation, as drivers will assist clients from their front doors to their end locations, they'll assist them with carrying items such as groceries and they're also readily available usually within 15 minutes to give somebody a ride to return home. Regarding public facilities and improvements, there's four recommendations this year, and I'd like to highlight one proposed capital project as well, which is the John F. Kennedy Memorial Foundation in the amount of about approximately 109,000. This organization provides, as this council knows, it provides programs related to literacy, teen mentorship, home visitation, and a first service pediatric center. And it's also located in one of the city's CDBG eligible census tracts as well. The funding request is for a new roof on its facility in the amount of about 73,000, which has been an ongoing issue with water leaks. And just as well, if the council recalls, a few years ago, we funded new flooring improvements throughout the at the facility. So a new roof actually helps protect some of our previous investments as well. The second part of the request is for security improvements in the amount of about $36,000. And to explain and really as an example of collaboration, the police department, code compliance, the city manager's office and our county outreach team has previously met with JFK with its executive director and on sites and staff onsite and which resulted in making various security recommendations and providing other resources as well. And some of those security recommendations from that collaboration include enclosing and securing both the patio areas as well as a pathway on the backside of the facility. And regarding program administration, there's two funding recommendations this year and one recommendations for overall grant grant management, as this is a labor intensive program. And as previously mentioned, the second recommendation is mandated fair housing service, which is allowable under this category. And to conclude, the outside agency funding committee has reviewed and supports these recommendations as well. And that completes today's presentation prior to the public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer questions as well.
Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? I will now use my virtual capo to open the public hearing. Is anyone here to offer comment for the public hearing? It seems not. I see no raised hands. So I will close the public hearing. Any discussion?
I move approval.
And who would like to second?
I will second heavily.
It is a very happy agenda. And thank you to Mr. Carey for leading us in really enhancing the good use to which we put these funds. So let's have the vote.
Mayor Protem Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nastan?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
And we move to item 28, which is quite responsive to some of the issues raised in our recent discussion. Consideration of zoning ordinance amendment to amend the Palm Desert Municipal Code and add section 25.28.045 San Pablo Overlay District to establish an overlay district which will regulate commercial land uses along the San Pablo corridor and applies said overlay district to all commercial properties along San Pablo Avenue between Highway 111 and Magnesia Falls and adoption of a notice of exemption in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So as you've just stated, we're bringing to you a pair of ordinances, the first of which will establish the San Pablo Overlay District. This district will restrict or ban new chain businesses from locating within the San Pablo corridor. It will also establish a process by which certain formula-based businesses can receive approval through a conditional use permit. I'll elaborate more on that later. It'll also apply this overlay to properties which front directly onto San Pablo Avenue between Magnesia Falls Drive and Highway 111. It will also be applied to these properties which front upon Highway 111 between, let's see, San Carlos Avenue here and Las Palmas to the, on the west side. So the intent of this ordinance is to preserve the unique character of the San Pablo district as it has been developed into may have vital area of the city center connecting the civic center and El Paso. This was something that the city started to look into about two years ago. The city council established this as a goal during the 2019 budget cycle, I believe. And then it was presented to the Economic Development Subcommittee, which was very supportive of staff pursuing this. Additionally, staff has also done a lot of outreach to the small businesses along San Pablo, namely Eric, who's walked the street and we've held a lot of public meetings and we've seen a lot of support. It's also supported by the city strategic plan as well as elements of the general plan. So getting into the specific details, what the ordinance will do, it will identify define a formula-based business, and this is any kind of a chain business that has 20 or more locations throughout the world in operation at any one time that has standard elements, standard architecture, protocol of merchandise, set menus, things of that nature. It will ban these uses from operating within the overlay. However, we are providing an opportunity through the use of a conditional use permit, which would be approved by the planning condition to potentially allow these formula-based businesses based on findings that they're providing something that sets them apart from other locations, be it through a unique decor, different architecture, something that will set them apart so that they can fit better with other businesses within San Pablo. There's going to be a maximum cap, 40% of the commercial frontage on San Pablo for these types of businesses, as well as other characteristics that they have to share a building with at least one non-formula-based business. And with that, you know, that concludes my presentation. We would recommend adopting the ordinances as presented and passing it on to second reading. But if you have any questions, I'm available here. Thank you.
Any questions? It looks like councilmember Jonathan.
Thank you. Quick question, hopefully. Mr. Maloney, thank you for moving this ball forward. Great report. Appreciate it. So and maybe I missed it, but is there an override provision? Let's just say a super cool trendy donut shop wants to open a, you know, store on San Pablo and we really want it. I mean, who doesn't want really good donuts? Is there a way to overcome the ordinance or is this just, it is what it is?
The only methodology would be through, if that applicant were to submit, if they are a formula-based business, meaning they're a chain business, that they would submit a conditional use permit for approval by the planning commission and it would have to work its way through that process.
Yep, thank you.
So just to make sure I understand correctly, it would be possible if they met the conditions in this proposed ordinance, which essentially assured that they bring something special to the table.
Yes.
Any other questions? Then I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone here to comment? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. It's a good thing we only have two items. My hand is getting sore. Do we have discussion? Well, councilmember Quintanilla?
I have a feeling that as a conversation that I had with the city manager about how I may sometimes feel as the thumb pointing in a different direction than the other council members. But I just can't help but notice that it seems that there is a very concerted effort to shape the vision of the San Pablo district, but I would just love to remind everyone that San Pablo is already part of its own district as district one. And I think that the idea of having any special group of people come in that would dictate to the current people that are there about how to keep themselves. I mean, we keep talking about how we want unique and we want unique. Well, we should let the businesses that are there continue with their own unique vision of how to do things. And so I hear very interesting things in contrast to having just had the drive-through argument about how we don't want to change, we don't want to change, but ooh, if it's shiny and pretty and something exciting, we want to change it. So it seems like we just had the same argument for drive-throughs, but now it's switching in opposite. So it just seems to me that the, it's almost a whimsical decision at times about what will fly and what will not. And I would be remiss as the elected official for district one to highlight that this is already part of a district. I know it's not the same as a voter district, but I just don't think that there is a need for this to cultivate a vision for district one if it's already there.
Well, councilmember Jonathan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I appreciate that perspective. I guess, you know, part of the purpose we serve is to present different perspectives. So mine is that San Pablo is part of our city and we are one city. And we do have a vision for this incredible city. And part of our responsibility is to shape the city towards that vision as much as possible. I think what's before us takes a big step towards that vision. I embrace the vision and I embrace the staff recommendation and I'm prepared to move for approval to that effect if this is the appropriate time to do so, Mayor.
Always appropriate. Let's see if there's a second as we continue discussion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Let me, let me offer this because, and I'm so glad you spoke up, councilmember Quintanilla, to share what you were thinking and what you were feeling. Because it may just be a bit of a need for more of that kind of communication to help us forge a shared path. I see this step as completely supportive of what has organically begun to happen on San Pablo with wonderful, unique, local offerings from local entrepreneurs that are so positive in terms of helping people to lift themselves up and to give enrich life for those who live in close proximity. So it might just be that sometimes we're using a different language that doesn't completely communicate, but that's my sense of what this proposal has the potential to do. So I offer that to you in the hope that that helps. Yes.
It does serve as a point of counterbalance to consider different points, but I continue to echo my sentiment that district one exists and I don't need to embarrass the city by reminding how much it costs to settle the lawsuit and the fact that there are still people that continue to want more change and more districts. So if the council continues to not allow the item to keep coming up in the agenda, there's, the conversation's not going away. The conversation's not going away. And I think that I would be remiss to use every single opportunity to speak up on behalf of not only my constituents in district one, but all of the people across the at-large district that tell me that they want districts because they feel they have concerns in their parts of Palm Desert that aren't being tended to. And so keeping the focus on an area that's already growing, there is opportunities perhaps to switch our vision to support the master plan in other parts of the city where those residents are feeling neglected.
Thank you for that. And other comments? We have a motion and a second. Shall we vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harnick?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nastan?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintanilla?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carries for one with councilmember Quintanilla voting no. Ordinance 1366 and 13 Ordinance 1366 and 1367 passed to second reading.
Thank you. Which brings us to mayor and council member reports and requests for action. And I'm sure we're going to set records for being concise, starting with Councilmember Nistandi, who always excels at that.
Well, tonight I'm going to prove myself correct or to your standard. I have no comments. I made all my comments I care to make for this council meeting, but thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Quintanilla?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege of attending the animal campus committee meeting and that was very informative to hear some of the programs that are going on and great to hear the different considerations that are the lengthy steps that they had to go through when pets were surrendered after their owners passed from COVID. So sometimes the things that we don't consider until it's placed on our radar. So that was very interesting to hear that staff had additional time and expense of full coverage PPE to go into a home and remove the animal, quarantine the animal, just to ensure that we wouldn't be the first place where there was a different cross-species infection. So that was very, very interesting. Also, the Art in Public Places Commission meeting, that was very interesting. And there was a very lengthy debate regarding the finalists. There had been six finalists after the engineer pulled one that wouldn't work despite a high score. So some of the considerations were about the ability to see through the art and ensure that the roundabout was safe. Issues of how high and tall it would be in the event of an earthquake or collision. Would it fall into the road or potentially have injury? So I think that after they decide on the top three, those will advance and get an honorarium to be able to produce the model and continue there. It was very, very interesting. And so the commissioner's comments continued on the issue of stolen art. So I'm not sure if that's something that a lot of the public may know, but there was not just vandalism, but a theft of a sculpture. And so the commission was discussing whether or not it is even really worthwhile to have a bronze or copper statues in the future as those would be targeted for being melted down as a resource. The discussion continued about murals and the idea of embedding QR codes and that the idea had been brought up in the past, but QR codes weren't as trendy. But the pandemic necessitated paperless things and so people are more comfortable with QR codes. And the discussion about the monarch butterfly mural that was approved at a previous council meeting, they're discussing, discussing some of the locations, including the UCR Palm Desert Campus. It would be on the inside of the stairway. And very interestingly, that it would be a movable mural, so this could potentially be used elsewhere. And in regards to a request for action, I, after having some very impassioned conversations with residents and also with Mayor Kelly about some very unsettling experiences that were held by families of color in the city of Palm Desert. And with that, the desperate need for the city to have a human rights commission. So I would like to request a timeline for that as there are active members of the community asking to be on it and to really be able to impart a conversation for change. I think that also I will request once again, and it was brought up as a comment, but not a proclamation, but I will specifically request once again, a proclamation in support of our Asian-American and Pacific Islander neighbors and residents. We, we can't just give them a pat on the back. We have all across the country, we are seeing proclamations and support. And I think that Palm Desert cannot just say, good job, we see you. We, we respect our brothers and sisters of all different communities. And I think that when they are asking for recognition, they are asking to be seen in other lights other than just the way that they are being dehumanized and targeted. And so again, I request wholeheartedly that we revisit a proclamation in support of our, of our Asian-American and Pacific Islander neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me share with you that the Subcommittee, our committees and commissions met recently to push along the discussion of a proposed human rights commission. And we were quite adamant that it should have a high priority. So that is-
One last, if I can continue my last note. I have been, having several communications with Mr. Gary regarding some of the support for homeless individuals and their support to get them into transitional housing and ensuring that we have continued support or renewed support for the upcoming budget sessions to have an increased number of caseworkers because there is, the response time is critical to ensure that we have. For example, I heard of a gentleman who was disabled, an amputee and veteran, who was suddenly displaced and evicted without cause and without reason. And unfortunately, once that happened, he went back to his substance abuse, as reported by the resident that reached out. And so there is, there's a couple of group homes, both a men's group home and a women's group home where there is a persistent bed bug problem. So there are residents who then are leaving because they don't feel comfortable. They may be endangering the jobs that they just got. And so they are then not able to maximize the use of the facilities that have been allotted, allocated and difficult to get for them. So that's my, my final point of the night. Thank you.
And another preview of coming attractions. You will soon see a proposed homelessness task force, which Councilmember Jonathan originally suggested that will really be the focal place for identifying how to enhance staff utilization. So, thank you. Councilmember Jonathan?
Oh, yay. Well, it was going to be a one-word report and that word was going to be none. But I lost track of all the requests for action just before me, but there's one that stood out. And I think it's something that I've refrained from doing, but I think that we actually need to set guidelines for proclamations. I've had concerns, you know, our city has been so smart and just focusing on the business of the city and not getting political and not getting unfocused by political, state, national issues. And so it's been a charming city in that regard. It really has. And I, because of those concerns that we're straying from that, I'd like to request that before we have different council members request, you know, certain proclamations, which is the prerogative of the mayor historically, that we set specific guidelines. And if, when staff is ready to do that, I have some very simple suggestions.
Can I make a suggestion? The city attorney and Mayor Protim and I have been compiling a list of things that we need to visit about our council procedures and that's on the list. It's been our intention to get through the budget process, get through the committee and commission appointments and then to tee up this list of things that we should visit and have some shared understanding about. So with that timeline, be satisfactory with you, Councilmember Jonathan.
Well, yeah, absolutely. And I always hesitate to add to staff's plate and I apologize for that. I would just ask that we, in the interim, place a moratorium on any of us council members taking the lead on proclamations and allowing the mayor to have that prerogative as he or she always has.
Well, may I simply suggest tonight that I'm always open to suggestions. I think I've dealt with them for the good of the city with sensitivity to everyone's concern. So I'll ask for the space to continue to do that until we establish procedures. Mayor Protim Harnik, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Quintanilla. I, I'd like to avoid back and forth at this point since it's really not the place for-
I completely understand, except, but I would be remiss in not acknowledging that it is the primary function of the city to serve the people. And I apologize if perhaps Councilmember Jonathan's experiences in the city of Palm Desert are in shape by, by a form of privilege where he doesn't understand the value of a proclamation in support of people who don't feel as included or as visible, or perhaps even not as safe as Councilmember Jonathan does in the city of Palm Desert.
Well, that was something. That really takes us to a new low. Let's move on.
Thank you for that. What it features for me is that we probably do need to find an occasion to simply understand each other better. And this can't be it. So until we create that occasion, let's try to make as few assumptions about each other as possible, all in all directions. Because we've worked quite effectively tonight on some pretty momentous issues. And I'd like to see it sustain that pattern. Mayor Protim Harnik?
Okay, no assumptions, just the facts, ma'am. I have been working on some calls for the digital divide and it's for all of Southern California. And I have, am included in this conversation every other week. We are getting ready now and things look very good for us to work on this broadband fiber plan. And it's for $4.8 billion with a B from the state matched by the federal government with $4.8 billion. So with $8.8 billion and everybody is involved in all of Southern California and it's IPS providers. It is government, it is education, it's employee, it's exciting. And that's good news for Southern California and those who need, I think we all need better broadband. The other thing is, is the train, the Coachella Valley San Gorgonio Pass Rail Corridor, which I would just like to call it the CD Rail Project. It's, the EI, the environmental projects and studies will be released, I think it's on May 21st. There will be plenty of opportunity to comment on them. Please comment on them. We want to get that train coming. I know it's years away, but this is that step we've got to take. There will be public hearings and I think June 22nd might be the first one. But let's, let's let our voices be heard on that. The other thing, I have a request and this is something I think it's important that we look at. And I hope the staff and the council can see it the same, and if not, so be it. But we have a tendency to plant the non-native Mexican fan palms that quickly grow and are out of human scale and are messy and are not native here. And I would like it to, for us to discourage the use of those in landscaping because it is not an asset. They quickly are not beautiful and they're messy and they're even dangerous when the wind blows. And instead have a requirement for developers to make sure that they put in those canopy trees and those beautiful shade trees like we talked about tonight, 300 new trees on San Pablo that we'll put in there. So that's my request is that we can take a look at that at some point over the entirety of the city, putting in shade trees that will be an asset. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have just one request for action. From time to time, one or another of us have spoken about the pollution caused by leaf blowers. And I believe that this topic has been touched upon in our sustainability committee. I know at least one member has done considerable research on the issue and that Palm Springs has a potential pattern from which we could learn in terms of finding grant funds to replace equipment for landscape folks. So my request for action is that this be made a sustainability commission topic to review our, all of our policies concerning leaf blowers and to see if the pollution they cause can be reduced.
Mayor, if I may, I know Councilmember Nistandi has brought it up many times. I believe it's on the next agenda for the sustainability.
Just making sure because I understood it has been taken up there and I've assured some residents it's being taken up there. So I'm making triply sure. Any comments from our city manager?
Not this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. I want to thank all of my colleagues for the dedication you bring to this and the canter. And I have sincere appreciation for each and every one of you and encourage us all to continue to collaborate for our city's best good. So I know it's our intention and some exchanges this evening tell me that we perhaps have some follow-up work to do outside the context of formal meetings to make sure we're able to best communicate with each other. There being nothing else to come before us, we will be adjourned.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Get your vaccines, get tested.